Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Select Board. We're going to start off the evening tonight by going into executive session to discuss a few matters that were posted in our agenda. So as such, I move that the board vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Subsection 21A3, to obtain advice of counsel and discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation regarding the construction of the police station insofar as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and further to invite Town Council Peter Mello, Town Administrator Blythe Robinson, and Executive Assistant Judith Lizardi. The board will reconvene into open session for the purpose of entering into a second executive session after.
Second.
I also state that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body. I hear a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weider, aye.
Carolyn Van Tyn, aye.
We'll see you after. Thank you. It is Thursday, March 5th at approximately 7:15 PM. My name is Kevin Calcutt. I'm joined by my fellow board members Chris Weider and C.C. Van Tyn. We're also joined by our Town Administrator Blythe Robinson and our Executive Assistant Judith Lizardi. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcasted to NCTV's government cable channel as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube channel. With that, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Blythe, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
It's a bit of a long one.
As long as that takes.
So, we have, after public comment, we have a number of action items. First one is to consider issuing a special one-day license to the Norfolk Lions Club for the Chili Fest that they're having on Saturday, to author -- do you want me to go the order we've changed it to?
Please.
Sure. Then we're going to take up what was number eight, which is to consider sending a letter of support to the Mass Historical Commission for a grant to replace the Norfolk Grange roof. Then we'll come back to consider authorizing the Norfolk School Committee to submit a statement of interest to the MSBA for the expansion of the Freeman Kennedy School, followed by a consideration of, to determine the amount that the board will want to support in the FY21 operating budget to annual town meeting, to vote on the board's intention to lay out Nichols Way for acceptance at the May 12th town meeting, to consider exercising the town's right of first refusal to purchase a property located at 75 Cleveland Street, to consider an appointment of the board, to the Board of Registars, excuse me, to consider approving a request from the Federated Church to use the gazebo on Town Hill on Easter Sunday, April 12th, for their annual sunrise service. And final action item is to consider appointing Judith Lizardi as Records Access Officer to replace Anthony Turri. Following that, we have four discussion items. The first is to discuss the first draft of the warrant for the annual town meeting, then to discuss the formation of a building committee for the repair or replacement of the fire station, to then discuss adoption of a code of conduct, and finally to discuss a policy to publish correspondence received by the board on the board's website page. We have a number of warrants to be signed, and then approval of several sets of open meeting session minutes.
Provided we are still on the 5th of March at that time, after midnight probably.
That will be correct.
All right. That brings us to our first item this evening, and that is our public comment period. As a reminder, anybody who is in attendance this evening has the opportunity to come up and join the board and offer some thoughts of items that they feel are within the scope of the board or the town administrator. We ask that you do not use this time to go after an individual, whether that be a town employee or another resident, and we ask that you keep it within the purview of this board or the town administrator. That being said, do we have anybody who would like to join us for public comment this evening? Now, please come join us.
Well, I don't know if I should do this right now or later.
Chances are it fits into right now, so please, you come right over here and we'll get a microphone over for you.
Okay.
There you go. Perfect.
Okay. I wanted to comment on one of the items on your agenda.
Right ahead.
This is considering the right of first refusal for the property at 75 Cleveland Street. So, I came tonight because the -- I'm the chairman of the Historical Commission, and we have received an application for demolition for the house. And since I received that, it kind of changes, changed our perspective and the feelings around, at least for me. And I talked to the CPC Chair this afternoon, and to Blythe, and to other people on my commission. And when I spoke to Cindy, who I know very well, and I served with her on CPC, so I'm pretty familiar with what goes on at CPC, I said, "Now that they want to tear down the house, I'm more concerned about the opportunities that we're losing here, and I hate to see this house come down." And Cindy explained the decision of the, the recent decision of the CPC, that there were obstacles and it just wasn't practical, and what would they do with the house? Well, I said to her, "Well, you can sell the house with the preservation restriction." She said, "Well, I don't know if we can really do that." So, I was in contact this afternoon with the Coalition for Community Preservation. It's a state-level group that advises all the community preservation committees in the state. They interpret the laws, and when you have a question, they're the ones that you call. So, I know them well, because I've had to deal with them in the past, same kind of questions. They said, "Absolutely. If the town buys the whole thing, you get the house, you can sell the house with a community, with a preservation restriction, so that the object of the community preservation committee, the historical preservation part of it, is applied to the house. It can be preserved forever. You can sell it at whatever price you feel is going to attract a buyer. They can invest money into the house. They can make a profit when they sell it. It's not like affordable housing. However, there is a preservation restriction on the property placed on it by the CPC in perpetuity, and that's what preserves the house." So, I am going to ask you to please not vote to give up your option yet. Give the Historical Commission and me and the CPC a chance to, for a little more time, because I don't feel that there's a tremendous rush here. I know town meeting is coming up and that's an issue, but you have four months before you have, before your option runs out, and that's like mid-June. So, I would like to ask, you don't make this decision yet. Give me some time. I'd like to go back to CPC and ask them to reconsider, knowing that they can preserve the house. They can buy it, and then they can sell it, and they can sell it at a price that's less than the Weavers were asking, because, you know, the price might have been the option, the obstacle that made it not sell, because it has been on the market for a while.
Understood.
I've got lots of pictures. I don't know whether you want to see the pictures.
Oh, I mean, this is an item on our agenda, so I think I'm pretty comfortable in saying that, you know, if this is up for reconsideration by the CPC, it's not really the position of this board to go rogue and start acting without their final approval of an item, so unless anybody has any.
I asked Cindy today if they would, if they, if I came before them, if they would listen to me and reconsider, and she said, "Well, I don't think we can sell the house." And I know they can sell the house. So, it's, conditions are different than they were when they made their vote.
Okay. So, I think it's perfectly acceptable to.
I also would offer that I had a meeting with the Chairman of the Planning Board this afternoon on a completely different matter, and the town planner, and understand that the Planning Board is taking up a interest by the future buyer of the property to, as you know, tear down the house and be able to put up two other houses on the property. They're taking that up next week. So, I think for both Ms. Pine's reason and the Planning Board, we could at least defer this till the Select Board's meeting, March 17th, or the first one in April, because if there's a decision to change direction, and we did say want to buy it, then we would want to be able to add it to the, add to the board's agenda, opening the warrant, to add an article before you sign the warrant at the end of April, and line this up for a town meeting to be able to take it up.
Absolutely. I think it makes sense.
Thank you very much, Betsy. If you wouldn't mind on your way out, if you could just sign the sheet over there to sign your public comment.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment this evening? I am seeing none. All right. So, on to our next item tonight, and that is to please consider issuing a special one-day liquor license to the Norfolk Lions Club for their Chili Fest fundraiser on March 7th, 2020.
So, the Lions Club is a charitable organization, and they're having their Chili Fund, Chili Fest fundraiser, and as a charitable organization, having such an event, they are entitled to a full alcohol license to sell beer, wine, or alcohol on a particular day. They have filled out the application. They provide us with the requisite insurance. There are no issues proposed by concerns of police or fire, so we would fully recommend that the board authorize their license, and if you're so amenable, we have copies for you to sign after the vote.
Very good. Chris, questions, comments, concerns?
No questions. I think it's great.
C.C.
Nope. I love chili.
Very good. With that, I would move the board approve a special one-day license for the Norfolk Lions Club for their Chili Fest fundraiser on Saturday, March 7th. A second? I hear a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're going to take a quick moment just to sign this and get it out the door, because we are the objects of responsiveness on this board.
We are many things.
Sir?
Yep.
All right. That'll bring us to our next item tonight, and that is to please consider sending a letter of support to the Massachusetts Historical Commission for a grant to replace the Norfolk Grange roof.
So, this came in as a request from Select Board Member Weider, that he'd been, I don't want to speak for you, Chris, the, he had been approached by the Grange, asking for a letter of support. So, there's, there's some background here for you. I, I myself don't know a lot about the project, other than when, when groups go for Mass Historical Commission grants, they typically look for letters of support from the community and from the Historical Commission, and Betsy Fine was gracious enough to act, to provide me with the letter that the Historical Commission has already sent on this. So, I put it before the board to debate whether you wish to send a letter, and if you'd like staff to write it.
Chris, anything you'd like to add?
I know Sam Ziegler is here with us tonight, so maybe we should let him give us a brief.
Please, come join us.
I am the new worthy master of Norfolk Grange, and we need a new roof. We have needed it for a while. And this is a, I think we have a good chance of getting a grant. There's a 50% they, they give you. It's a pretty straightforward project, and I think it's, I think it's important for the town to keep this old building going, you know, or to help us keep it, keep it going. Goes, we go back, the Grange and the town have a long history, back, back in the '30s, when it was, well, after the, after the old town hall burned, that's where meetings were held, and, and it was a big, big part of the social life of this town up through even my parents' generation, when you talk to old people. It was an important part of this town, and we're just trying to keep it, keep the tradition going. We are part of the whole larger Grange. There's the state Grange, national Grange, so we keep, we have to follow their traditions, and we try to provide a place for people to meet and celebrate. And it's a, I don't know if you've ever been in it, but it's a nice, nice old hall. So, we're just asking for your support.
And just to clarify, all you're asking for is a letter of support. There is no financial or other commitment otherwise, right?
Yeah. We've got a, we have the other 50% in the bank. We basically get money from rent in the hall, and we just need, that's, I think it's an important part of this application, to get these letters.
Just out of curiosity, if they don't give you the grant, what, are you going to forego the roof, or?
Well, we'll have to look at some other options. We, we can't afford to do it. We don't have that much money. Yeah. We, we have enough to, to do the half. It's not totally leaking, like I said, but I've been up there patching it up. The steeple, I think, was done in the '60s, the last time. The, that, the cap that's black. I think it was Al Ravinsky. But, well, we're going to go for this one.
Very good. C.C., do you have other questions, comments, or concerns? Chris, anything else you'd like to add?
Concerns? I think it's great. It's great to see the hall being used and used up more often every year, which is super.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What does the application do, just so we can make sure?
The 20th.
The 20th.
I have to get it in by the 20th of this month.
And then they want the letter sent to, to you, or to the?
Yeah. If you send it to me, I just attach it to all the paperwork.
Thank you, sir.
Any other clarification or questions, Chris? With that, I would move that the board authorize the Chair to send a letter of support to the Massachusetts Historical Commission regarding the Grange's application for a historic preservation grant application.
Second.
Hear a second? Further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Just one, one clarification. Would you like me to sign it on behalf of the town? Would you like to each sign it? How would you like to set that up?
I mean, we have two weeks to be able to get it, so I would like to sign it.
Okay.
To appeal to the others.
Sure. Write the numbers.
There we go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our next item this evening, and that is to please consider authorizing the Norfolk School Committee to submit a statement of interest to the MSBA for the expansion of the Freeman Kennedy School. I imagine that we have some folks joining us for this. Am I correct?
Where you want us.
Absolutely. Wherever you'd like to go.
I know you have a packed agenda tonight, so I will try to be very brief.
Thank you.
Back in October, late October, we came and provided a presentation to the board that reviewed the work we did with Nezdeck for enrollment projections and enrollment study. I think Dr. Don Kennedy was here with us that night, who talked about, he's their data and demographic specialist. The Space Study Committee was put together because there was significant concern on the part of citizens, as well as the schools, of what the impact of the current 40B projects and all the growth in town might be on our capacity to absorb students and be able to provide appropriate educational spaces. So, once we had the enrollment projections, which we, they are expecting over the next 10 years for us to see another 250 students in the school, I think after the meeting, you had asked me to send you the projections compared to actuals.
Correct.
And they're really very close. We only have two years of data, because we just had them start that work in 2017, but they're really very close. This year, we were expecting, based on those projections, a significant increase in our kindergarten enrollment. Last year, we have moved the process forward for kindergarten registration, so parents have to actually go online, register their kindergarten student, and we moved that up to January, so we would have better actual numbers for budget purposes. Last year at this time, we had 121 students registered. This year, we have 149. Typically, we pick up an additional 10% between the time kindergarten registration really dwindles and the time we open. So, when we, at this time last year, we had 121. When we opened the doors in September, we had 133. So, we are expecting, based on the fact that we have 149 now, it's very likely that we will open with 160, 165, which is pretty much on track with what Nezdeck had indicated. Next year, we are completely out of space at H. Olive Day. We're actually two classrooms short. So, we need an additional second grade next year, based on the seven, we have seven first grades this year, moving up into six second grades. So, we need a second grade classroom, and we need a new kindergarten classroom. We do not have any classrooms available in that building. So, we are, last night during the budget presentation, we talked about trying to renovate the technology office and close the server room to try to create a small group instructional space. We hope by relocating some other service providers, we can create one classroom, but we will have to lose either the music, art, or computer lab next year to accommodate the additional session of kindergarten. If that trend continues, the year after, we're going to need another classroom, and the year after, a third. So, we are out of space. That space crunch is hitting. We'll be okay at Freeman next year, because we are reducing the sixth grade classroom, moving that down to that second grade position where we need it for enrollment. But then, as those grades roll up and we can see additional enrollment, we're going to be out of space at Freeman very shortly. So, when I came back in October, I also talked about the work the Space Study Committee did. We looked at several different potential options for expansion that would help us absorb the, the growth that the town is seeing. And the most cost-effective and feasible was to consider one addition at the Freeman Kennedy, rather than trying to expand both schools, or looking at rentable, portable classrooms. What we are asking tonight is for the board to consider voting to allow us just to apply to the MSBA core building program. The application process does not commit us to moving forward the project. All it would do is help the town and the schools determine whether or not we might be eligible for cost-sharing. Our past projects, MSBA has funded, we have seen about a 50%, 51% cost share, so it's a significant savings for the town. But again, it doesn't commit us to anything. It just, MSBA has criteria they consider. One of them is you can apply if you're at risk for substantial overcrowding. So, this would give us a sense as to whether or not they would consider this situation as making us eligible for state funding. So, we're looking for a vote to move forward with applying to the core program.
So, there isn't a defined parameter for what is projected overcrowding? It's kind of variable in nature?
Right. And even with, when we applied for the H. Olive Day roof repair, their threshold was, it would be eligible for, was it 25 years?
It was 20.
20 years. They got so many applications, they then changed the criteria, and in the first year, they moved it to 30 years, so we were kicked out. So, it really depends on who else is applying, what the conditions are. I think it's wise to pursue it now. We may be declined, and that would give us one more potential year that we could go forward. After that, the town's going to have to make decisions on their own.
Right.
So, this would just give us a sense of whether or not we would be considered. Again, it doesn't commit the town to moving forward the project. Even if you are accepted or invited to participate with MSBA, they do that in stages, so they would invite you to participate first in just the design service portion. And again, if you got to that stage, we would be redoing enrollment projections. We would want to make sure that we're not building more than we need, that, but we're also not shortsighted, and that we can absorb what we're expecting. So, the design that we presented back in October is not a final design. That was just a feasibility study to make sure that with that one expansion project, we'd be able to absorb what we needed to.
Because if you look at the projections that went past fiscal year '21, and the next three years, we're maintaining those levels. They dig up a little bit, 10 to 15%, but we're relatively staying flat, right?
Right. Yeah. So, we'd reassess, and again, look at what the projections are to actuals, what we're seeing, whether we could scale that project back at all, or whether, you know, we'd want to make sure that we're building, and that's what MSBA would want to do, too. So, they do another sort of feasibility design section before they move forward with anything further.
Got it. C.C., questions, comments?
Nope.
Chris?
No, no questions.
So, MSBA makes this very convenient. There's a very lengthy motion. We have to use their language.
Oh, boy.
It's in their packet.
It's in your packet.
Yep.
Just in case, don't have it.
All right. Here we go. "I move that having convened in an open meeting on March 5th prior to the closing date, the Select Board of Norfolk, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated April 6th for the Freeman Kennedy School located at 79 Boardman Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Elimination of existing overcrowding and prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollments which must be substantiated. The district is currently out of classroom space at the H. Olive Day School and cannot accommodate the two additional classrooms needed next year without impacting other core educational programs. Increased enrollment due to significant building and construction is expected to result in severe overcrowding at the Freeman Kennedy School in the next few years." And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional school district to filling an application for funding with the Massachusetts Building Authority, School Building Authority." Man, I said that like seven times. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hear a second? Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Dr. Lowry. Thank you very much, Matt.
I did want to also let you know that we expect to be coming shortly before the board with the H. Olive Day roof closeout. We just received this week the final closeout documents. We do expect that project to be about $225,000 under budget.
Very good. Thank you for the great news.
Hopefully, good news in a couple months.
"Our next item this evening is to please consider determining the amount of the fiscal year '21 operating budget to propose to town meeting." Blythe, do you want to take us through a little background before I set the table?
Sure. So, in your packet is a package that Toddland Mark, our finance director and budget guru, has put together. Gives you an overview of where we are right now with the budget, and just to set the table, if you will. The budget is out of balance by just under $300,000, and if that budget shortfall is eliminated, the overall budget increase from FY20 to FY21 would be 2.81%. And so, prepare to talk tonight in more detail about how we got there, what's involved, what's included, what's, what's not, and what strategies we might be able to employ to reduce it.
Thank you. All right. So, just to outline quickly how we're going to progress through this discussion. First, we're going to ask Blythe to maybe go into a little more detail about the methodology we use to get to this baseline budget for the point of conversation. She'll go through some of the assumptions and the highlights, outline the current deficit, and then talk about some options that we have for us to balance. After that, the board will be opened up to ask some questions and provide some initial feedback on preferred overall funding levels. Blythe will also have some impact items associated to different levels that we'll be discussing. After that, we'll open it up to the public. Anybody who'd like to make a comment or have a question about anything that we're discussing as it pertains to this subject? And then finally, the board will reconcile any gaps in expectations on funding levels and vote on a final direction. I just want to reiterate the importance that this board will be providing an overall percentage increase direction. It is up to the finance team to be able to put together a final budget for our approval at a later date. So, all that being said, Blythe, do you want to take us through our baseline?
Sure. So, the goals that we had to put this budget together were to, to continue the level of services and the school programs that we are, have presently in place, to work within available revenues. This is not a year we were going to consider an override, and so we had to work within what we had, we have available to us legally to, to raise. We wanted to reduce our, our dependence on free cash. It was about $230,000 last year, and although the town has been moving downwards on, on that, we wanted to continue to try to do that and wean ourselves off of that. We obviously want to meet all of our contractual obligations, and we want to try to close any structural deficits that we've identified in the, in analyzing the budget. And so, if, to start with, looking at revenues, and that's the second page in the, in the book, the assumptions that we made were to include a 2.5% tax increase, which raises about $780,000, to account for new growth, which we estimate to be $600,000, and as I said, to reduce our dependence on free cash and other sources, and we're proposing that we reduce it from $233,000 last year to $100,000, and that we further analyze, you know, the permit fees, some of our other revenue sources, to make sure that they are appropriate. And the one I, you know, ones that I will call out are, for instance, in the area of the transfer station. We've been budgeting $325,000 each year, and in fact, in FY, in FY19, we bought, brought in $256,000, and the, and the transfer station costs us much more than that to operate. So, that's, that was an area that we identified, because we don't want to start out a year knowing we can't bring in what we expected. Conversely, last fall, as you know, Conversely, last fall, as you know, the fire chief implemented increases in our ambulance fees. And we are already seeing a return on that. And we are finishing up some analysis, but we expect that we can increase the revenue that we contribute to the budget for that, which will help offset the cost of the grant positions that we have hired. So we're still working on some of those, and we're prepared to, we will be prepared to bring forth some adjustments that will help close that gap. On the expense side, we have now seen that both of our school districts have certified a budget. And we have included in the budget those full amounts, which is important. We have, on the town side, contractual obligations with our various unions that range anywhere between 3% and 4%, and those are all accounted for. It was a year where we did not want to assume any increases in staff, if at all possible. And the only ones we have in here are the two grant-funded fire department positions that we have just added for the SAFER grant. As you recall, the federal government covers 75% of that cost the first two years. And we can't also overlook the fixed costs that we are required to pay. And the more significant ones this year are an increase in our retirement costs of 6.7% for next year and our health insurance costs of 3.8. I think it's also important to point out to you that when we first discussed the budget and we talked about what we could afford in December, we had modeled just over 3%. And we made assumptions, and some of those assumptions have come true and some have not. The most significant one on the revenue side is state aid. The governor's budget includes a 2.8% increase in what they call lottery aid or unrestricted government aid. And that's great, but what we've also experienced, and it was mentioned by Ingrid last night, was that there have been additional students choosing to enroll their, parents enrolling their children, sorry, in charter school in Franklin. And our charter's tuition costs have gone up almost $100,000. So we had modeled a 2% increase in state aid. In fact, it's a reduction of $3,400. So that was worked against us. Our health insurance costs have come in lower than we expected, and our retirement costs have come in a little lower than we expected. So it's puts and takes. I think it's also important to talk about, you know, what we've tried to do to reduce the town side of the budget because we have made progress in a number of areas. We are proposing that for the non-union employees, there's perhaps 25 or so across the organization, have typically received the same pay increase as the clerical union, which is 4% next year. I've asked all the department heads and their staff to budget a lower number at 3%. And they have all willingly done that. So that has helped close the budget gap. As I mentioned, we have increased the ambulance rates, and I fully expect we'll be able to make a significant increase in what we have budgeted for ambulance revenue next year. As you know, we put in place, you voted on a policy on employees being able to opt out of health insurance if they have another option to purchase their health insurance. We don't know how much fruit that will bear across the organization, but we are shortly about to send out a letter to all town and school employees who have health insurance and make them aware of it and ask them for an indication if they're prepared to tell us that they would be interested in participating because that will help us determine whether we can reduce that budget in some way. As I mentioned, you feel very strongly that we should reduce our dependence on free cash, and you see that there. And then we have another suggestion I want to just bring up to you tonight to start to think about, which is in Norfolk, for all of our employees who retire from the town, they are eligible to purchase their retiree health insurance from us. The town decades ago accepted the law that allowed that to happen. And currently, the town pays 65% of that cost, and the employees pay 35%, the same as full-time active employees. The town did not accept a section of the law that allows us to pay more than 50%, which is the minimum threshold with regardless of what you do. Communities must, if they accept the law, pay 50% of the cost. There is another section of the law that we probably should, we should have adopted at some point that allows us to pay more than that. I can't explain to you why we never did, but we are currently paying 65% of the cost instead of 50. And so we have looked at what that is worth. And it affects about 123 former employees and/or their spouses who are on a retiree medex, med gap plan. And about 14 people who are not eligible for Medicare and are on some version of a regular single or family plan. It's worth approximately $124,000 next year. It's a significant thing to consider in balancing the budget. And it also will very likely have a significant impact on our overall OPEB liability in the future. But balancing that, I absolutely must point out that if it's changed, it will have an impact on people who have already retired in what they pay per month, per year. And it will also have an impact on people who will retire in the future. So it's a decision point the board would like you to consider at some point, and we can talk about a process to do that. So at this point, where we're at is looking for a direction from you about what level of budget you would feel comfortable supporting for next year. And in your background, I have noted that, as I say, to get to a balanced budget, it's lower than it was last year for the reasons I've stated. And the deficit is just under $300,000 to get to 2.81%. But in your book, you will also find, for information, what the reduction would need to be across the organization if you were to support a 2% budget. We modeled a 1% budget. We modeled level funded currently from FY '20. As you also know, we went through the exercise on February 8th of looking at zero budgets and level funded budgets and a budget that we thought was level service, modeled at 3%. There are some adjustments that we certainly will continue to look at because we can't close the gap simply on a retiree health change and revenue if we assume that some of our other fixed costs are fixed and we want to support both school districts at the amounts that they've certified. So there's more work that needs to be done on the town side. And I feel comfortable working with Todd and the rest of the departments that we can figure out those reductions if retiree health insurance is some part of that solution. So that's overall where I would start, and then happy to take questions.
Well, thank you very much, first and foremost, for putting this all together. I think this is a great baseline for us to be able to structure the beginnings of the conversation.
And I should mention that Todd is here, and he's been working on this as closely as I have. So if we have questions, he can come forward.
Very good. Nice to know we have him out there.
Yep.
Chris, did you want to open it up with any comments or questions as to how we got to the baseline?
No, I know how we got there. I'm concerned about the use of free cash. I mean, this is, again, this is taxpayer money that we're folding back into the budget to cover our deficits. It's money that I feel should be used. And if we don't start using it to do some of the $50 million of capital that we've earmarked, we'll never get there. We've earmarked $11 million in roads. And if we're only going to put $250,000 to our road program every year, we're never going to get there. So I have a real concern to begin with, with using our free cash.
Okay.
And then the other thing, which we talked about in February, and I don't know if I missed it, is understanding, again, the MECC Center. Is the maintenance, we have maintenance in schools, we have maintenance in town, we obviously have maintenance at the MAC. And we talked about a PNL for the MAC, which I don't think we've seen yet, to understand how that relates to these other two. Is there any double counting in those?
No.
And are we, and are we breaking even on our rental property? Because that's basically what it is. The town owns a rental property. Where are we with that? Because I think that's an important aspect of our budget.
So we have two agreements, and Matt's actually here, so I'm sure he can answer if I don't get this quite straight. We have an agreement that pays us just rent for the space. It's about $54,000, $53,000. And then we have a second agreement that pays us for our work to provide those custodial services. And that's $39,000 or so. I have them upstairs on my desk. When we discussed it and ran the numbers, we are actually slightly more than covering our costs to provide those services to them. So over total, we're bringing in almost $90,000. And the rent is straight, helps, if you will, offset the cost of building the station because it comes into the general fund and helping to pay that debt. And the separate agreement for maintenance more than covers the cost of providing the maintenance, the staff associated with it, the supplies, those sorts of incidentals.
As I said, I'd like to sort of see it. And is there any duplication of staff between town? How do we break out the staff between town and the MECC Center? Are they being broken out? It appears as if the same individuals who are working at the library are also working at the police station, which I assume are the same ones working at the MECC Center.
We have one and a half custodians on the town side that work on all of the buildings. I mean, I asked Matt to come forward and tell you exactly who is working in which one. But I wouldn't say there's duplication, no. Matt, do you want to come forward and give some more detail? Sorry, I'm glad you're here. I didn't.
So I answered this properly. Can you pose a question again?
The question is, and I guess it goes to the school as well, is how are you accounting for your maintenance? You have maintenance at the school, you have maintenance at the town, you have maintenance at the MECC. And obviously, some of the same people are doing multiple tasking. So how are you allocating that budget? Because you've got, the town budget's almost $848,000. Then you've got, and here you also have, I think it's about $908,000 for the schools. So, and then the MECC obviously is on top of that. Or is that inclusive of these two numbers?
I don't have that in front of me, so it's hard to answer that question. If I can read your book, I can tell you.
Sure.
I would just, while he's looking at that, I would remind everybody that the custodians who work at the schools are in the school budget. They're not in the town budget. And they work specifically in the schools. The one and a half custodians that we have are spread out across town hall, library, COA, police station. And part of the person's salary on the town side is paid, if you will, by a revenue received from the MECC to offset that cost.
So the police station, it has the MECC built into the cost of that, if that's what you're looking to, is the cost of maintaining the entire building?
When you say the police station, where are you referring to?
There's a police station right here.
Okay.
That has the factored-in cost of the $39,000 we take in from the lease agreement. And we benefit hugely by that because we did a lease agreement based on square footage. If you've been up there, there's a massive training room. They don't really use it too often, but we're charging them the same rate. So we're actually doing very well because we have a small area that we're maintaining for them, but we're charging them for the entire space. So it's been profitable, not profitable, but it's been more than covering itself. As far as the custodians, we share them. We also backfill. I have 1.5 custodians doing about 120,000 square feet daily. The average for the level we're doing, they recommend a custodian for about, I think, 18,000 square feet. So we're getting a very large return on investment. The buildings are cleaned at a high level. We previously had contracted it out. We're spending about the same money, but having the buildings maintained daily on top instead of having it done twice a week, which was the previous way the town had managed it. So I'm not quite sure how to...
If your question is also about the cost of the MECC overall, their budget, because I sit as, one of my hats I wear as a town administrator is to sit with the other town administrators on the board that runs the MECC. Their budget includes both of those numbers for next year, and their budget is slightly less than the FY '20 budget. It's a slight reduction overall. And the assessment to the town is, we will not vote on the final budget till next week, but at this point, we're projecting it to be slightly less than FY '20.
Matt, we do have the one shared custodian.
Yes. So the 1.5, we actually have the custodian, we reduced the position at the school by .5 and shared it with the town. So with the school, my 1.5, it's actually a shared position, the .5. .5 school, .5 town, much like myself and Matt Malnerich, as a cost savings. We did, overall, the scheme of how we did this, we actually reduced our number of custodians at the school and made it so, it's worked out very well to date. Being at 1.5 and I have obligations, we've been able to backfill from the school at times that, like, if I have somebody sick in the town and vice versa, if I needed to, if I needed a huge event at the school, I could pull my town person. So having the flexibility of the contract we have in place has been greatly beneficial to the town.
Very good. Chris, anything else for Matt?
I guess I still have concerns over the $50,000 major maintenance budget item we have in there. I still think that should be, again, once you put it in a budget, it's hard to remove it. So I think if we, major maintenance, it's a very loose term. If we're going to, again, if we're going to have something that we, I know we had the example back in February of the boiler going here in town hall. But I think we can handle that through the advisory board, or I think we can handle that through an emergency meeting. But I just don't think we should have a slush fund in our facility maintenance budget of $50,000.
Hold on one second, Matt. Blythe, do you want to respond to the content or let Matt talk?
Matt, please.
It's not a slush fund whatsoever. That's a...
Mischaracterization.
Mischaracterization of how that's fun to spend. Last year, we had a horrible year on solar. We offset our solar by using the major maintenance. It gives us the flexibility to operate the town in an efficient manner. This year, I've had several items come up that I was not anticipating. It's kind of funny, after that meeting, the next day, boiler at the, actually, town hall had failed, and we were able to get it going again. But things do happen. We had a boiler this last week. We failed an inspection with the state because it was leaking. So by having the money available that's over the lines that we presently have for those budgets, we are able to accommodate or to attack issues right away. To date this year, we spent some of the money at the DPW because their oil consumption more than doubled. And we were able to spend money and knock it down, so we're at less than about 3/4 of what they were earning previous years. We had to spend some money to save some money, which we would have gone $30,000, $40,000 over budget on the oil at the DPW yard this year if we hadn't been able to do it. We had significant run at the COA. What else have we had? We've had several different projects that we've had to use that money for. So it's not a slush fund. It's for how we can accommodate action items that have to be addressed. And typically, we'll return it, and we try not to, it doesn't just go out as a slush fund. Those type of items are brought in front of the finance director and the town administrator. There is no slush. It's how we operate.
How much have you spent over this year, do you know, Matt?
I think I'm about $27,000 right now.
Okay. And do you, I mean, hope for nothing else, challenges, but do you have any reason why you would spend the rest of it unless you had a shortfall in solar or something came up?
Right now, yeah. That's basically, it's not something, last year, we returned some of it, but we did have to pay for the overage on the solar. It's kind of the emergency fund in order to not have to go because, again, if I have to go over every single time, it takes time. And it's not going rogue with a credit card, spending money. It's making adjustments and reacting to problems that the town has to do in order to stay efficient. Because, again, like, perfect example was the DPW. It's there. We had an issue going on. We were able to resolve it. We were able to spend some money, but we've saved a fortune. If I hadn't had that... a fortune. If I hadn't had that, you don't know what the advisory board's going to have. They have fifty thousand dollars a year, I think, right now. So if somebody had gone in front of me for that, there wouldn't have been available. So we would have a special town meeting. You can't spend money you don't have. If I, again, it's not a slush fund.
I guess, well, I'll recharacter as a, as an emergency fund. To me, it's, again, it's a fund that's not earmarked, which concerns me. And I, so I gather that in none of your town hall, DPW, old town hall, fire station, none of those include anything other than labor?
And what, no.
On any of your budget items?
Those are for service, parts, electricity. Everything's included in those.
So they, they do build in service, maintenance and things to those?
So when I have a five-thousand-dollar line and I have a ten-thousand-dollar problem, that's an issue.
But you still have it built into each one of these individual...
So the other, the other accounts that we have built in, Chris, do not have lots of excess involved. We have a budget that we have to operate within the parameters. So I'm not asking for ten thousand dollars extra in my electric line, so I can have it built in for something happening. This is, we have the budgets trimmed, trying to run it efficiently. We have something. There's a hundred-and-twenty-some-thousand square feet in the town buildings. There's another a hundred-and-seventy-thousand square feet, I believe, of the two schools. You guys have houses. I'm sure you've had your water heater go. You weren't anticipating that. You have to have funds available to do it. I cannot charge things. I have to have a method to pay for action items.
And I think that we've already gone through the steps of outlining how specific budgets are built and what they're used for. I think now that the focus should be more on how we're arriving at our recommendation for an overall percentage. So Matt, thank you for answering the question. Much appreciated. All right, Chris, so we've heard free cash. We've heard MECC P and L. We've heard split from police station. We've heard rent balance against income. We've heard the major maintenance line for facilities.
Correct.
What else do you have?
At the moment, that's it.
Okay. Do you have a increased percentage that you are currently sitting at in terms of an expectation?
I'm not, because I actually haven't had a chance to review the school budget. I actually had a ZBA meeting last night. Sort of disappointed that there was an email that went out that alluded to the fact that I did not show up, which was certainly not the case for lack of caring about the school budget, was that we actually had a ZBA meeting. But somehow, an email went out stating that I wasn't there. But I haven't had a chance to review that yet.
Okay.
So I think I need a little more time for that.
Can we, high-level, go over where the schools are right now, just to quickly outline?
Sure. So the, we received the King Phillips budget early this week. They are at a 1.46% increase in their assessment to Norfolk. Their overall increase, according to the superintendent, is 3.49%. And the reason it's less to us is simply because we're in the three, three-town district. The formula is quite complicated, but one of the factors it takes into account is the number of students from each district. And this year, the number of students from Rantham is higher than Plainville and Norfolk. So we had originally modeled a 3% increase in their budget from us, and right now, it's at 1.46. What we don't know is how our sister communities will vote on their assessments and how that might affect us. But for now, we built this budget on factoring in what both school districts said their need was to provide their curriculum and their services. So for them, it's 1.46%. As you heard last night, it's 4.4% for the Norfolk schools.
What is Rantham's share of the regional this year?
Seven-point-eight-two percent.
What's the dollar value?
Seven-hundred-and-something thousand.
No, the regional school district.
I...
We are 8.981. What are they?
I have to pull up an email. I don't know what the dollars is. I don't know what the dollars is.
It was supposed to 11 million, wasn't it?
I don't think it was over 10 million, but I can check. Hold on.
My concern being is, if we end up in that position next year, you know, we could end up with a, a million-and-a-half-dollar deficit. And how do we handle that? Because right now, no matter what we do, if we did a zero-level funded budget, we're a million dollars short. If we end up in this position next year, with approving this budget, moving forward at 3%, we are going to have to do an override in order to balance our budget next year. And that's a grave concern to me.
Well, I, I, I see your point, and all I would say is that, you know, that enrollment shifts. I mean, right now, we're seeing growing enrollment at the elementary level, and at some point, those kids are going to get older, and then likely, they will go there. Perhaps at that time, the enrollment might be different at our elementary school, and we'll have to see what that looks like. It doesn't sound like it. But I can't, you know, it's, it's hard to project for that.
I don't plan for it. That's my, that's my fear, is that, you know, we could end up in this situation next year, and we would be in dire straits if we, if we keep moving in the path that we're moving.
I think the difficulty is, I, I did some math earlier today, and when you look at all the fixed costs and the, and the school costs, that leaves approximately, that's just shy of thirty million dollars next year, if, if this budget is, goes forward. And the town side is 10. And so it's difficult for the town side services, you know, the breadth of those to be reduced enough to make up for what enrollment growth might mean to both school districts. Like, there's, there's services you would absolutely have to cut deeply in order to make that up. But I mean, I can't, whether, if Rantham is, is adjusting to an almost 8% increase this year, maybe next year, theirs will go down. I, I can't answer that for you. And as you saw, we, we, we lost revenue from the state because parents chose to send their children to a charter school that is directly affecting our revenue stream. And, you know, a, a point was made last night that I thought was a good one. Having kids, having parents decide to put their kids in kindergarten here, yes, we're seeing greater enrollment. But if they come here and they stay here, that actually is less expensive for the town of Norfolk than going to another school. And that's something we should not lose sight of. I don't, I don't run a school, so I'm not an expert in, in that, but I think those are choices. But what's going to happen with the turnover in the makeup of our community versus the other two? And what will that mean for school costs? It's certainly something to be concerned about, but I don't know how we can plan for that easily from year to year. I'd say if we are able to balance this budget, and come the fall, new growth is higher, or costs somehow are lower, you know, a choice could be made to put some more money, say, in stabilization as a, as a decision, and be a little better prepared. I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to then spend those monies on ongoing costs, because it's a one-time revenue, but it might set us up better for the future. I mean, I think that's what we need to do regardless of, of what expenses come along. That's why I want to see us use less free cash and, and deliver the services that we have. If we get to the end of this budget, and we find we don't need the free cash, great. We could use less of that. And maybe then there's more money for the capital needs, because we have them across the town and school organization, whether it be roads, or a roof, or something. I think we need, it's, it's important for the town to be responsible in looking at all these budgets and find ways to be delivering the service people expect, you know, with whatever level of effort and expense there is to do that, and trimming where we can to be ready to make, to be prepared in the future. I don't have a specific answer for you, though.
I'm just, like I said, I'm, I'm preparing for the future. And it's 1.8 million dollars with Rantham is greater than us this year. So if that turned around and we were there, we would be in trouble. So I'm very concerned by rolling out 3%, 3%, 3%, using our free cash to balance the budget, that we could end up in some real fiscal problems. And, and I know we can't project it, but we have to, that's what we're here for, is to really be, to make sure that we financially manage this town. And it means the hard choices. And I'm concerned that these, especially with this regional budget, the fact that Rantham is that high, that we could be there. And obviously, with the increased enrollment at the elementary level. You know, if we need to do something there, that's, that's, we're going to be in trouble. And we earmarked 50 million dollars in capital, 30 million outside of the, the school.
I understand.
And, you know, by using our free cash to balance our budget, which is rolling it back into the budget, not really cutting expenses, you know, people give back money, and then we go and take it, and we roll it back into their budget, you're never going to get ahead. We're always going to be behind the eight ball. We're never going to catch up on our roads. We're not going to be able to build a fire station or renovate a fire station. We're, none of those things will happen. And we'll keep talking about it. And we need to put a stake in the ground and start to really, I think we need to tighten our belts now. No one knows what the next six months will bring, nor the next two years in this financial market. We've seen, in four days, we've seen the stock market go up 2,000 points and down 2,000 points. We don't know what the future's going to bring. And so I think we have to really be very fiscally conservative at this point.
Blake, if you could, could you please highlight what the percentage increase is year-over-year? You had mentioned that what you're presenting in our baseline right now sits at 2.81.
Correct.
Do you know what the percentage increase was for the previous three years?
That's where I'm looking to the finance director in the back row to come forward, if he knows those answers.
I imagine it's higher than that number. I do not recall ever seeing a number that started with two in our increase year-over-year.
I want to say last year, it was four something, but I just didn't bring it downstairs with me. We can get that for you, absolutely.
I think the point I'm trying to make is that I think there's been some great efforts that have been done to be able to curtail a little bit of what we were seeing in far as a trend over year-over-year growth up until this point. So I, I don't know if I would necessarily say that we are continuing down an incorrect road. I think that we are making some great strides in the right direction. And I think that our baseline that we're working with here does some of that work for us. I'm not sure if it gets us all the way to the point where you feel comfortable, but I did want to make a note that we are in continuing an upward trend that we've seen year-over-year for the last three years. This has been, from my perspective, pretty dramatically reeled back, as far as our baseline, not where we're going to end up in the final nature. Okay, so we have KP. You heard the 4.4 increase for Norfolk schools. If you're not comfortable with coming up with a direction, I just wanted to use it as a basis for our conversation, but...
Not at the moment. I'd like, I'd like to look at the school a little deeper.
Okay.
I mean, the only question I guess for Dr. Lardy would be, is that, you know, I think it was either 2011 or 2013, enrollment was around 1,100 at the schools?
No, that would be way, way back. I don't have the...
I think it was 2011 I saw it. There was some number, a couple, many years ago, there was a, there was enrollment that was far greater than we have today. And I'm just, and again, trying to understand, how did we go?
I have the answer. Do you want me to...
How did we go from that enrollment period? How did we survive and, and make it work? And we're back there today at that same number as it was. Why is it, why do we, we were blaming the 4.4% increased enrollment, but how did we do it back? It was either, I think I saw it today, somewhere in one of your slides.
Yeah. Wait, since I've been...
Ingrid, if you could just grab a microphone, I'm sorry.
And I apologize. I don't know where that is, but again, I haven't...
Can you hear?
...to go through it deeply.
Okay. So since I've been here, the enrollment's gone from about 890 up to 990, where we are. So we've been growing in the eight years that I've been in Norfolk. But you're correct. I don't know exactly back, was it 2005, 2006? The enrollment at one point was around 1,000. Quite a few things have changed that have, that result in increased costs and space needs. So for one, back when the enrollment was higher, we only had half-day kindergarten. So you had one teacher teaching two classes of kids. They only came in for half the day. So you only needed one teacher for that 50 kids, and you also only needed one classroom. Now, because the state frameworks require, are, are written around a full-day kindergarten model, we have to split those. So we have two classes, which is two teachers, two assistants for the same 50 kids. So there's that piece there. Additionally, Norfolk has really worked hard to build in-house special education programs. Many kids in the past may have gone out for specialized services. That has a significant cost impact to the town. But when we build programs, we have to staff them. So you see that increase in our budget. You'll see our special ed costs have gone down, but our staffing, our in-house staffing needs have gone up. We also have to build spaces for those specialized programs. We have a growing enrollment in our pre-K programs. Those are mandated by law. We're supposed to provide programming for students as of their third birthday, if they have special education needs and require early intervention services or educational services. So our pre-K numbers have almost doubled in that period of time, which means a number more classroom spaces needed, a number more teachers needed, assistants. We have to have our ratios in our pre-K class. We have one teacher, two assistants for every 15 kids. So as that grows, there's a staffing impact there, too. So it's programmatic shifts and changes to the full-day kindergarten curriculum that are driven by the state, as well as growth in the early childhood programs that we have.
Thank you. That's great.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Lardy.
I don't know how to turn the software. I just put it back.
Yeah, you can drop it on the table.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, things you'd like to identify?
I can, can I chime back in again later?
Absolutely.
Oh, good. Okay.
Cece, go right ahead.
Well, I don't have too much, because I know you're still sort of noodling around. I did have a couple of questions, just to make sure I understood from diving off from what Chris said, that this year, Rantham is taking a hit, because they were the ones with the highest number of students.
They had a positive enrollment, versus Plainville and Norfolk had a negative enrollment. Right.
Is it something that you can, for instance, so I was at the meeting last night, and so I know that there's, I don't know what, I'm not, I'm not going to remember, like, 158 kindergartners and only like 116 sixth graders, and all the numbers in between. So I could look at it, and I could say, okay, there's going to be 161 by the time we get to September, 161 kindergartners. And those kindergartners are going to be seventh graders and however many there's that is, because I'm not a math guy. And, but I can also go and call up my friend in Rantham and say, well, how many do you guys have? And I can call Plainville and say, how many do you guys have? And kind of figure out when this, you know, Armageddon of, of money being hemorrhaged for the regional school system is likely to happen, right? Like, those are, those are numbers we all, we all have, right?
Well, the, the calculation for the assessment is actually pretty complex and includes a lot of mystery as it pertains to, yeah, there's, I know that, you know, there was a previous member of this board who tried to figure it out so that we could prepare a forecast for King Philip for a long time, and never was able to nail it down. There was always a surprise that came up. And Blake, you might be able to speak more to the components, or maybe not, but, I mean, they include, I believe, income per capita for the individual towns. There's a wealth component to it. There's a bunch of different things that aren't necessarily known to be able to forecast. I'm not saying it couldn't be done. I'm sure that we could get the ballpark.
Okay, well, that answers the question, but I guess...
But there is aspects of it that may get...
So that answered, that was, that was my question. But I guess the secondary thing, sort of to your point of being concerned that all of a sudden, we're going to get, we're going to have, we're going to know what all of our expenses are. Everyone will have done this process like we did for this, be running as lean as we think we can. And then all of a sudden, we get the phone call that we're on the hook for the extra 1.8. And what do you do? And I feel like, again, harkening back to the message from last night was, I, I just don't think, I'm splitting my, my analysis, but I don't think that you, I certainly agree in the idea of rainy day and figuring out a way to find some money to assign to, to the, those eventualities, and finding some money to assign to other things that I know Mr. Linmark wants us to be signing, right? Like, creating the tranches that we're socking money away in. But I also know that if Armageddon happens, like 2008, when Lehman Brothers went belly up and the market went kaput, I'm just trying to clean up my language. I'm trying to think of words that, that say what actually happened without saying it in a way that the FCC is kind of come calling. But we dealt with it. But you can't live, like, we couldn't sell our school system to people looking to go shop between Sherburne and Dover and Norfolk and Rantham if we constantly lived as we did when Lehman Brothers collapsed. Like, everybody understood, it's a recession. You're going to have, what was it, 4%? I can't remember what the cuts were, but they were at 4%. Look at, see, paying attention, when people think I'm not. Damn. I don't think you can live every day like that. And, and so that's just my observation, that if the rainy day comes, we deal with it as we dealt with it 12 years ago, and then sort of slowly clawed our way back with the understanding that, yeah, it could happen again, and then, then you deal with it again. But then you have this sort of pattern. You say, sure, yeah, I know you're looking at our town, and you're saying, you don't have any art. What's up with that? Well, we don't have any art this year, because we had this thing happen, but we've always historically had art. Here's our plan to have art again. So that's just what I think about that. My question is, and I wrote it down, I don't have my glasses, so I can't read it. Were we going to be merging our MECC with Foxborough?
We, I'm not, I've not heard that we were going to be doing that. I think...
Has it been anything that's, right, like, again, just thinking in terms of, it may not be for this year, but just sort of the idea of more regionalization of things. Like, it's been so successful on a, on a, on a granular level, listening to people sharing resources between the school and the town. What other things... What other things, we have these...
So Foxborough is on track to open their own MECC in a building they bought from the state next year, and they've got two towns in their, they've got to have four, two are in it now and two will join them. I think we are at the point, at our, with our own MECC, that should there be towns who are looking to regionalize, we are in a position, we are going to be in a very good position to do so, but I'm not aware that those are coming quite yet. The reason our, and I'll spend a second on it, the reason our budget is, is, is level for next year is that the state retirement board let us know that the assessment that they, we thought we were going to have to budget for next year is not happening. They're not going to assess us until '21, and so money we had actually budgeted last year and is in our current year's budget, we've been able to save and put in our quote "stabilization fund," and we'll have that ready for when it does go up. And instead, what we had done is added three staff people to make sure we got to the right balance of people working on every shift and the night, and the right experience. And so it's enabled us to be flat. What that also does with those additional people is that should we be able to add people and lower our assessment to each of our towns because we're taking on more, we feel confident we'll be able to do that without adding anybody else. So I think we've set ourselves up for that. It's now, are there other towns ready to regionalize and are we the right model for them? So I think...
And how will we go about letting them know, hey, guys, we've got this really great center?
In part through 911, they come to, they have a person who comes to our meetings from the state regularly, and they know what other towns are thinking about, what issues they're having. So they might, they might approach us directly. And I think it's also getting to the point where we also let people know we're open for business. We have had, since I got on the board, it's been quite a whirlwind to learn about all the technology that has come with the MECC and working through the issue, some of the issues, especially on the fire side. All the people who developed the MECC are none of the people who are involved today. And there were some real challenges with, say, fire technology, a system that was chosen but wasn't delivering what people today thought they were going to get. So we've been spending since last May, working through that, and we're at the finish line of getting that sorted out. And so I think we are ready to do that, it's just a matter of making sure we are, so that we're confident if we're adding other towns, it's going to go well for the four towns who already signed on, because I want all of our police and fire chiefs to be saying, yep, we are getting absolutely the services we're looking for, it's what we hoped for, it's better than it was when we did it ourselves, and we're comfortable that if we add more towns calling in, our level of service is going to stay where we want it to be. And if that happens, we will be able to do it for less cost. So, yes, just might take a little longer than, than someone was trying to...
Judith, how's your heart doing?
Yes, we have to go home.
When you get long meetings, somebody wants to come in later than...
Yeah, I missed the vote.
Missed the door.
I had a question for Matt. Do you have like a microphone so you don't have to come back up here? Harkening back to your slush fund, I kid, to the 50,000. You indicated that, and I under, I under, I'm hearing what you're saying, that if you have that money there, when the unexpected happens, which it will, you're able to, to handle it then, which oftentimes results in cost savings. If it were a lower amount, but you could think, like, you were talking about, and I know I'm kind of getting in the weeds a little bit, but it was interesting to me, so I'm asking. Like, I know it's not a big-ticket item, but, so if you know that, it's time to go now. If you know that you can buy, you know, you, you see, for an example, that, that it looks like there's going to be an increase, although if I could veto it, on the gas tax or on diesel tax, like, and it's going to hit, and you're going to want to buy a ton now before it goes up in price. And so that's what you're doing. But if you know every year you're going to want to make those kinds of buys, can you shift around the line items so people aren't feeling like, do you know what I mean?
We do shift around, because there are years that we, the heat right now in the buildings, it's been a warmer winter, so we've been helping, I'm trending well on the fuel lines right now, which we, we have shifted, but at, like, last year, there was no other method to pay for our electricity. By having that method in place, we were able to pay our bills, because if I hadn't done it, we would have had to do a following year, fiscal year. You know, in the beginning of every time meeting, they have unpaid bills from last year, it would have had to go to that, but being able to, we run the department as conservative as possible throughout the entire year, and we do try to stock up towards the end of the year for some of those, what we, items that we know we're going to have, but we have, these are living buildings and there's constantly things are adjusting, so...
I understand that.
But they, I mean, when I took over, it had been $75,000, I think before that it was $100,000, and it's been going down. We've maintained the 50, but that also is for the school buildings as well, for emergency. And it's, it's, again, it's not a, it's not a slush fund, it's...
No, I was kidding about the slush fund. I don't think that that was meant as a term of art the way you know it. It was basically a rainy day fund.
100% do move money from line to line, because it's how it's set up in the town. I can't, if this line is lower, I can put it over here, but there's always something that's...
So my next question, and I think you kind of answered it, so you sort of intimated up here that if there was, you were functioning at a deficit, if, if you didn't have your fund and all of a sudden the boiler went, there would need to be a special town meeting?
Yes.
That's how, but you, you just indicated that for a lot of the things, you would just, you would end up just presenting to town meeting the unpaid bills from the prior year.
Problem is, is I cannot authorize work to happen without a funding source for that. So if I know I don't have enough in the overall pot to cover and the other utilities that we have to pay and all the maintenance, I can't issue a job. So there are times I had to go to the advisory board when we were looking for a transfer to get the MSBA project on the roof going on, so I, that is an avenue. There's kind of forecasting what we go through, we know we're going to have, and if I, if it's something that it can be accommodated within the 50,000, which we've done the past couple of years, I think we've given back, except for last year, on some of that.
And that was my, so that's, so I get that. And so then my next question was, and, and I, I don't know that it was how I, I heard it or how it was said, when you say you give money back, you don't mean, like, you said you pay it back, but you don't mean that somehow you generate another 50 to replenish? You just mean that whatever is left at the end of the year...
No, what's not used, out of our budget goes back to free cash.
Right. So you're not paying it back, you're just giving back whatever is unused?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
Thanks, Matt.
Just a point of clarification.
Yeah, I mean, Matt comes to Todd and to I. Yesterday, he was in my office because a door at the library had gotten open and hit, caught the wind, broke the door, and he showed up in my office holding the screws and telling me that he needed to talk with the library director about any funds she had available and his budget, which is not something that could be anticipated and has to be dealt with. We hope they don't happen, but I think the capital plan is a good indicator of the fact that our buildings are aging and things come up. And so we want to be able to deal with those and, and deal with them judiciously. And, and other things come up. I, you know, we'll, we'll be telling you in my report this week that we have a fire, fire engine number two, needs engine work and could cost as much as $25,000. I will probably be heading to the advisory committee for a transfer because we don't have enough in DPW to deal with that and other work that happens for other, all other vehicles, to get that, that back on the road as soon as possible. And so we're just trying to be prepared to, to, to react to situations when they happen as quickly and as economically as we can.
So the only last things that I'll touch upon right now is, I know you mentioned about the shifting, the amount that is paid for by the town on retirees from 65 to 50. And we're going to talk about that more at some other time.
Yes.
So I look forward to hearing that, sort of to Chris's point of wanting to hear more about the school budget, which I want to hear more about that, because I do, and, but I know that, you know, that there's been other conversations of those other places where there may be cost savings in addition to that or in lieu of that. I like, I know it's not zero, I like the number. I like 2.8, it's got a 2 in front of it, which is stunning. It's not going to be perfect for many people, but I know that when we were first approached in December, it was 2.5 plus new growth, which put us over 3, I think 3.64?
3.07.
Yeah.
Damn it.
Sorry.
Damn it. I hate correcting you. It would have been so much better if it was 2.64. Anyway, still lower. So, and I know that it's a process, and we're just going to keep working it, and I don't think Rome was built in a day, so those are my observations.
Thanks, Cece. So very quickly, I spent my first year on the board becoming Todd and Mark's least favorite person. I was with him quite often in his office, bugging him about what was going on, much like I'm sure that both of you did when you were first elected, to get acclimated to a very complex budget in a very short amount of time.
Not even for a day.
This year, I took a slightly different approach, which Todd is very thankful for, I'm sure. And I spoke to more of the community. I spoke to people of all demographics, of all different situations, and probably much to the chagrin of them, I really battered them down to get their perspective as to what their expectations were for this budget. We can go into the details about the specifics of each line item, we can go into the specifics of each department, but at the end of the day, I think a big component of this is what people are expecting to see on the outside of this process. What are they expecting to see on a day-to-day basis in terms of how we function and how we provide services for the town? And I heard a range of expectations. I heard things from, you know, I expect my tax rate to go down next year. I don't really care what happens with our sale, with our services, I just want my taxes to go down. And then I heard the complete other way. I heard people say, listen, tax me out the ears, I want to see everything fully funded, I want to see Spanish back at HOD, I want to see all the things. So the challenge of this board is to be able to find that middle ground, is to be able to find how we can accommodate for providing the services that people expect in moderation, as well as being able to do it in as fiscally responsible a manner as possible. So I appreciate all of the perspectives, all of the points that have been shared up into this point to help us get to that middle ground. I can't begin to say how much I appreciate the work that the town has done, Blithe and Todd and all the department heads who sat here for eight and a half hours on a Saturday to bring everybody up to speed. That was incredible. The presentation we saw last night, Ingrid, was fantastic. The presentation we saw at King Philip was very comprehensive. All of these things contribute to us being able to find that middle ground. And so where I am at this point right now, and probably being a little more into it than I necessarily should be, I agree with Cece. I think the 2.81 number is a good number. I think it satisfies a lot of what people were expecting in terms of stopping the upward trend that we were looking at year over year, while still being able to maintain much of the service and level services that people were expecting to see in terms of our operations as municipality. So as of right now, that's where I stand as well. I also look forward to learning more about some potential for getting us back to a balanced arena and potentially even getting that a little bit lower with some of the things that we're in discussion right now. But as we stand at this stage of the game, I am in a good place with the 2.81 number.
I would feel comfortable that we can come back to you at the next meeting on the 17th and bring you a list of, of changes, both revenue additions, reductions, we've talked about some tonight, we've got others on, on our list. You know, there's still going to be a little bit in play while we try to figure out, you know, does anyone want to take a advantage of the health insurance opt-out plan, and whether the board wants to consider the retiree change, which, you know, is, is significant or not. But I think we can put a mixture of things in front of you, and, and we may even be able to make it a little lower than 2.81, you know, when we all, we look at in totality. And some of that might evolve, you know, as we get closer to town meeting. But we'll come back to you with what, how we think we can solve it, and so you can understand exactly what that looks like. But at this point, I'm going to take that direction of leaving the school budgets where they are, at the 1.46 and the 4.4, and some of the fixed costs that we can't change, and we'll work around that, if that's okay with you.
At this time, I'd like to open it up for any public comment, if anybody would like to share a comment or opinion. You have the ability to do so now. If you could just raise your hand and let me know that you'd like to speak. Dr. Lardy? Please.
I just wanted to respond to the concerns about the regional school and the regional assessment, because I do think that's a valid concern. And I just wanted to share that I was at a meeting last week with the superintendent from Rentham, as well as Mr. Zinni and the superintendent from Plainville, we do meet regularly once a month. And one of the things that Rentham is doing right now, I mean, we recognize that we are a K6 district, but we also recognize that we feed King Philip, and the education that Norfolk's providing is K-12 for your children. And Rentham Elementary is looking to make some tough decisions and cuts in order to support the town in, in supporting KP's budget. They recognize that this is, you know, a one-year hit, and they're, that we're collaborating and working in partnership to try to balance the total education spending. And, and we have partnered with King Philip in, in the past for that. So we, there was a year that the board, actually, the select board came back and said, you know, we're short in funding KP by about 40,000, can you guys make some tough, tough cuts in order to accommodate? So we do try to work in partnership. The other thing I wanted to say is that over the past, I guess, this is Mr. Zinni's second year there, over the past couple of years, we've really been working with KP to share programming and to look for ways to share resources. This past year, we wrote a regional mental health grant, we brought in, it was about $350,000, and were able to fund positions that both districts needed at no cost. So we have two social workers working for us now and a director of wellness, who has been doing a lot of grant writing. We've already submitted that for next year, but we're continuing to look at ways that we might be able to share services to reduce costs from both budgets, and I think that will help us in the future going forward. We also worked with KP, I think in the past, we've talked about added district costs for special education. We have in Norfolk a lot of very strong programs at the elementary school. We have therapeutic programs for students that need social, emotional, behavioral supports. KP has not had that in the past, but we've worked together to help them build a receiving program in the middle school. And I think you probably heard at the budget presentation, they, they brought their added district costs down. I think they brought back about 35 students over the past couple of years that had been outplaced. So we continue to partner and recognize that you're funding a K-12 experience, not just the elementaries, so that's what we're going to share.
Greatly appreciated, thank you.
Yes, just, I'm not sure if the select board is aware, and I certainly wasn't aware, honestly, until I was on school committee and we started allocating jobs. One of our committee members in town is a full sitting member of the KP School Committee. That's part of the relationship we have with the school committee. So there is always someone who is there from our committee at their budget meetings. So if there are questions across the course of the year about that, there's an update, I think, at each meeting, from each of the subcommittees that we have, and then from the KP Regional District as well. So as those conversations are ongoing, if there's concern, we do have a resource available for communication directly with that committee. The current chair of the KP Committee is also a Norfolk resident, so just, and I'm sure he'd be thrilled to talk to somebody about the budget, so, just FYI.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment or perspective they'd like to share? Donna, go right ahead.
Donna Jones, sorry I had to step out, I wasn't sure if it was covered, with King Philip, where there's three towns. If we allocate, we said, we offered 3% to them, and they said, Norfolk, we need less than 2% from you, but Rentham and Plainville vote a higher number, do we have to accept one of those higher numbers?
So, quick clarification on the sequence of those steps. We don't go to them initially with a number. They come to us initially with an assessment that's based on a required local contribution, as well as a couple of other components, and that's presented to us at an early point during the budget process. They come up with an assessment number for each of the three towns based on a number of factors. We then take that number and we debate that number. We talk about how it fits into our overall vision for the budget, and in some cases, we would go back to them and say, look, I'm sorry, you're going to have to work on that a little more, or we would go... Or, we would go back and say, "Okay, that fits into our expectations." Now, the way that town meetings work, we're first out of the gate, and then Rantham and Plainville are on the same night after. Two of the three towns vote a number, that's the number. So, to your situation, yes, we could vote a number, whether that be lower or higher than the assessment that was provided to us, but Rantham and Plainville vote something differently and agree on something, we have to match that, whether that be lower or higher than what we wanted to do.
And that actually happened this current year. We included a number that they certified that was higher than, we included the number that was certified, then the other two towns voted a lower number, and we actually ended up having about sixty-five thousand dollars more in our budget than we were allowed to provide them, because the number was lower at the end.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but just from a practical standpoint, and I know this is televised, but one of the other communities is really functioning at a, is really struggling with their budget right now, like with a significant, significant deficit, such that it is unlikely that they would say, "Yeah, let's throw some money at KP." So, at least for this year, like I know that there's a huge delta between where they need to be and where they are. So, at least as far as this year.
And that's why we have the joint meeting scheduled with the two other boards to be able to talk through our position and our strategy as we go forward. Maybe we align, maybe we don't, but
Right.
Just to get a better understanding of where everybody's at. Anybody else for a comment or perspective? I'm seeing none. So the last piece of the budget discussion, I had outlined as the board reconciling on direction for Blythe and the finance team to be able to come back to us with a proposal for ratification. I think that we heard two perspectives. Chris, did you have anything else that you wanted to add from where you sit?
I think I gave my perspective. I think we're, I think we, I understand Cece's point of dealing with the rainy day, but in a household, you plan for the rainy day. And, you know, if you're, you go to the doctor, and every year you gain ten pounds. When you go to them in the fifth year and say, "I only gained ten pounds last year," but you gained fifty pounds over the last five years. You know, if you keep adding three percent, two percent, year over year, you have a capital plan, you have aging buildings. I mean, we have a huge maintenance budget, but I've heard about a boiler, a door, you know, a number of things failing. If you keep going at three percent, you can't get that back unless you make severe cuts to your programs or to your departments. No one wants to cut the schools. We don't want to cut teachers. That's the last place we want to cut. We don't want to cut janitors. We don't want to cut administrators in town hall. So we have to really look at those big items and make decisions on them. And I think if you keep going at three percent, and before this process started, what was the number? We were brought in at three-point-oh-seven percent. It was basically taking this year's numbers and adding three-point-oh-seven percent. Didn't require a lot of heavy-duty work. We're at two-point-eight-one. I would like to see a little more heavy, and it's not questioning the job. You know, we do eventually, I think, have to get to zero-based budgeting, maybe like the schools do. And I'll certainly take the time to sit with Dr. Lardy and talk about what they did. But I think we have to get to that point. We have got to really zero in on our costs, and not just take the numbers from five years ago and keep bringing them forward. Keep using our free cash to fund it. We are going to get in trouble doing that. You don't do it in your home. You don't, some people do, but you don't max out your credit cards. We're getting to a point where we're going to max out our credit cards. Our stabilization fund is one-point-five, one-point-six. We've got four-hundred thousand left in free cash. It's not a lot of money. We've got fifty million dollars in capital items. I don't see us ever getting to that point without then raising our taxes. We talked about looking at those items and actually putting what the increase in our tax rate would be. And I think when you get to that nineteen, twenty dollars per thousand, we're going to get into trouble. No one says our taxes will go down. I know Jim Lee, ten years ago, said taxes will never go down, your percentage. He's sort of right, because that percentage increase every year, due to steps at the schools, increases at the schools, contractual obligations, you're never going to get those to go down. They continue. But we've got to put a stake in the stand and say, "If we want to do fifty million dollars in capital items over the next ten years, if we want to do eleven million dollars in roads, which is the number-one thing when we all were elected, people said, 'Roads, roads, roads.'" It was a priority for people in this town. They liked our educational system. We've got to start to cut somewhere. We can't be using free cash. We've got to find some monies. And we're not, we don't know if growth is going to continue the way it is. It may slide off. And the only way to do that is not to increase your budget at two-and-a-half, three percent. And I think it's, you know, again, Matt said it, he doesn't know what, we don't know what the costs are at the new police station. Electricity is up forty-five thousand dollars. Unknown. No one knew it was going to happen. All the planning in the world didn't solve that. What happens if we find out at the end of this year that, oops? You've got to plan for that. And you can't just use your stabilization fund or your free cash to do it at a town meeting. I think that's the wrong approach. That money should be earmarked for our capital items, especially with our roads. And so, yeah, I think we really should be looking at a level-funded budget. We really should be. I think we're making a mistake by not really taking them to a really earnest consideration and drilling down a little bit more on every single department. The schools have done their zero-based budgeting, so maybe there's no room left there. And, yeah, they're fifty-five percent, so it only leaves us forty-five percent to work with. But I think we really have to drill down and see, is there any opportunities, is there opportunities with, you know, combining, you know, do we look at HR directors? Do we look at the library? Do we look at technology combinations? You know, try to see if we can maximize our efficiencies now, so we can continue to grow, and then attack some of these capital items, as well as face what really is, besides the regional school system, is a problem with the local school system, that we may be faced with a twenty-million-dollar expansion. That even if ten is picked up by the state, it's still ten million dollars. And I realize every year, we're losing a little bit from the police station, we're losing a little bit from some of the other things, but not enough to make up for this. That's my perspective.
Thank you. Blythe, as we went through the initial proposal process where you reached out to the departments for their initial requests, how many of them, from an initial standpoint, were requesting more than three percent?
The only one that's, without going through the book, the only, the one that stands out for me is the fire department, and that's based for two factors. The two new positions that are grant-funded, and the impact of the collective bargaining agreement that we executed with them a little less than a year ago, to not continue to lose staff to other towns. And the costs went up, but we, the goal was to not train people to have them leave. So, those, the second year of the agreement is really where it hit us, hit us the hardest. The first year was fairly affordable. The second year was when the educational stipends went into place. So that combined with the two positions is what has it at nine-point-three percent. But as I say, I, we're going to be recommending, when we come back to you on the seventeenth, an increase that we think is very sustainable in ambulance revenue that will help, you know, bridge that gap.
Thanks.
And, and when we come back, you know, we will also be looking, looking hard at those zero and three percent budgets we talked about in February, and bringing some of those reductions forward to bring you back an overall budget at two-point-eight percent, or perhaps a little less.
Okay. Well, it sounds like you have your direction
Yep.
To be able to go back and compose a final proposal for the board. I think the board has some takeaways in terms of things that they're going to look more closely as it pertains to the schools, and as Cece had said, her items as well. When do we anticipate that we'll be circling up on that final proposal?
Well, I want to bring those back to you at the next meeting on the seventeenth. The only thing I don't know, two things I don't know. Number one is, how many people would be interested in taking the opt-out of health insurance, and what will that affect our budget by? And secondly, you know, the board will need to debate whether or not they want to change the retiree health insurance contribution. That's going to be a little bit of a process to notify retirees of the potential change and have you vote it. That's the most significant reduction that we can immediately put on the table. And that will have, to your point, will have a lasting impact on the community by lowering our overall cost of that, of that obligation. So, I would not suggest we want to take that up on the seventeenth, but I think it'll be important to understand whether you want to take it up or not. And I would also note that we have so far a list of about one-hundred-and-thirty-five communities and what the percentage they're at. When the law changed on health insurance in two thousand and twelve for five or six years, there was a moratorium where you couldn't change the percentage you were at. That moratorium has expired, and I think we have an opportunity to take it up and debate the issue and decide what you want to do. We also hear that the state would like to make communities pass a lot of, freeze the percentage where it's at, so you're going to pay that forever. And so I'm not saying that because I'm urging you to make this tough decision right away, I'm just saying we should be mindful of the fact that if we want to change it and structurally lower our costs going, for years going forward, we should think seriously about doing it sooner rather than later.
Understood. Thank you. This agenda item is listed as an action item, so do we need to take a?
I would say table it, and we'll come back to it on the seventeenth. I am, we are headed to advisory committee next week. They were waiting to see where you were tonight. I think what I would then describe to them is that I've been given this direction. The board hasn't voted on it, but this is where we're headed, and this is what we're going to try to do to get there, and just keep them up to date, if that's okay with you.
Objections?
Yep.
Please, Cece?
Yep, that's great.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Our next item this evening is to please vote on the board's intention to lay out Nichols Way for acceptance at the May twelfth town meeting.
So, it's my understanding that this nine-unit subdivision off Holdbrook Street, Nichols Way, was built by a developer named Mr. Tom DePlacido, and that according to the planning board, the street is, has been built to the town's standard, it's complete, and it's ready for the town to consider acceptance at town meeting. So, following what we did in the fall for a number of streets for the fall town meeting, the board needs to, in order to do that, is to vote its intent to lay it out. That triggers our office sending a letter to the planning board, asking them to, to develop a report to us that, of the status of that, so then the board can take a vote on April twenty-first, that we would need to, in order to put it in front of town meeting to vote to accept the street. So, there's a motion in your packet to that effect.
Chris, questions, comments?
Nope.
Cece?
No.
In that case, I would move that the board vote on the request of Tom DePlacido, its intent to lay out Nichols Way as a public way. It is the opinion of the select board that common convenience and necessity require the laying out of a public way in this location.
Second.
Hear a second. Further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our next item, please consider exercising. No, we will not be exercising.
I did not exercise today, if that is a good point.
There it is. Nobody will be exercising today. Our next item is to please consider an appointment to the Board of Registars.
So, earlier this year, we sent a letter to the Democratic Town Committee, just to let them know that we had a vacancy on the, on the Board of Registars that needs to be filled by, by a Democratic Town Committee member. We asked them for several names. They came back and offered us the name of Mr. David Rosenberg. We received a letter, an email from him indicating that they had taken that vote, and they are nominating him. So, we structured a motion that would allow you to appoint him to that for a three-year term beginning April first.
Very good. Any questions or comments, Chris?
Kevin, just one thing on that, on that seventy-five Cleveland Street. Don't we have to table that? We just sort of, we brushed over, but don't we have to table it if we're not going to exercise it or move to hold off?
Can we comment on it?
Sure. Yeah, I'm sorry, you're absolutely welcome to comment on it. Please, grab a microphone. Just out of curiosity, were you here for the, for the beginning of the meeting?
We were, but we didn't know if we should.
Oh, sure. I just didn't know if you had heard what was said and where we got to that point. Okay, perfect, go right ahead.
My name is John Owen, this is Nancy. And we were the proposed buyers for the property at seventy-five Cleveland Street. And I just wanted to introduce myself about, and tell you about my family, my wife, my, my daughter wants to buy a house in Norfolk also, and we were thinking, maybe we'd split this land in some configuration, and my daughter, with the grandchildren and her husband, and us would be on the lot. I understand that it has to go in front of boards, and whether the town's interested in it or not, they purchased for the price that we were offering for the property. And, pretty much, I mean, you know, when you, when you sell houses, or we buy, when you buy a house, the spring is an important time of the year to sell. So if this goes out for the hundred-and-twenty days, and you're really not interested in buying the property, you know, I would hope that you would let us know if we can go forward with it. The other boards, from what my wife understands, they weren't interested in it. It's five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, I think. The town would have to budget for it. As far as maybe selling the house that's there, I know from past situations in my town, where I live in Norwood, the Washburn House, they couldn't sell it. They couldn't get anybody to pay money for it because of the cost of moving it or anything like that. So, I mean, just things like that have to come into consideration, I'm sure. It's what's best for the town of Norfolk. I know that you are interested in it for that, for those reasons, but just, if it somehow could be kept in mind that if it's really not interested in buying the property, could it be dealt with before the full hundred-and-twenty days goes through?
I don't think anybody has the intention of dragging this out longer than it needs to. I think the only reason why we have even considered tabling it at this point was because another committee and board in town identified a historical component to what was being done
Yes, right.
To bring it back before the CPC. And this board relies heavily on the input from the other boards and committees in towns as they relate to those things. So, we'll give them the opportunity to hear the concern and come up with another proposal or recommendation for this board, and we'll have it settled as soon as possible.
I have a question. If CPC
There you go.
If CPC already voted not to buy it, why can they go back, can you go back to them and say, "Take a vote again"?
I don't know if there's necessarily a...
It was voted on in a meeting.
My impression in this current situation is that they're more, more information from the Historical Commission that they weren't necessarily aware of, that the Historical Commission is asking them to consider. So, I think that's really the genesis of this tonight.
We would be willing to donate the house to the Historical Commission to do what they want. It's just, how much work it needs, it's not financially feasible to put the money into that house. So that was our thing. You know, it's just, no.
Again, that's, you know, it's, you guys take care of your town business first, and we're just interested, and we're not developers to sell property or anything like that. It's for our daughter and the grandchildren on one, and us on the other. And really, if I could have lived in that house, I would, but it just can't work with the way we have to split it up.
Understood. And while we eagerly look forward to the potential of you joining us in our community, we do want to give them the opportunity to be able to address whatever concerns the Historical Commission may have, and in hopes be able to get some feedback from them rather quickly, so that we can ensure this gets settled as fast as possible.
So, the quickest would be the next meeting.
I was just going to say, are we putting this on for the?
I need to talk to Historical and CPC and see whether they can have a meeting before March seventeenth. Our next meeting after that would be the first Tuesday in April. And I think, what I'd say to the board is, we do need to move somewhat quickly, because if you wanted to have this on the annual town meeting, we need to open the warrant back up to add this article. We would want to do that in early April, so the warrant could be signed on the twenty-first, and the town meeting happens on May twelfth. So, I would, I will get ahold of Betsy in the morning and say, you know, "Please, work with CPC right away. It would be helpful to everyone, you know, the potential buyers and the town, to know, ideally by March seventeenth, there are no ideally by March 17th or no later than April 7th, I think, to know what direction we're headed, so we can simply tee up all the steps that need to happen to be, have it at town meeting."
Yeah, I think that would be a good expectation of parameter layout.
Yep.
I have a question as far as the Historical Commission. I went on to your website for the Historical Commission as far as historic homes in Norfolk, and this home is not on the Historic Commission list of homes, for historic homes. It's an old house. It's 200 years old, but it's not on the Historic Commission. Why at this point can she try to save it? I mean, honestly, it's not worth trying to save it. It isn't. But at this point, I just think it's, you know, we came here with the understanding that the other committees all said they don't want the house, and that it was basically you guys agreeing that the rest of the town didn't want that. It's upsetting. I'm very upset right now.
I can understand your frustration.
So, I just don't understand why it can be put off again. It's already been 30 days, so you're already 30 days into the 120 days since the town was notified.
Understood. So, we're still going to lay out the parameter that they have until our, at the very latest, our April 7th meeting to be able to get us a recommendation back. We will target the 17th and try to get it on that agenda, and try to get it settled as soon as we can for you. But that's going to be our direction going from this meeting right here.
Okay. So, it's already on the agenda at the Historical Commission for March 17th to get permission to tear it down? So, is that not going to be on the agenda for that meeting anymore?
I can't speak to the agenda of another committee, I'm sorry.
Oh, we'd have to speak to them and ask them.
It's on the Historical Commission's agenda.
It is. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, we should then, in that case, vote to?
I would say vote to table it.
Okay.
And?
I would move that the board tabled the vote to waive the town's right of first notice of sale and waive the town's right of first refusal for 75 Cleveland Street to our meeting on March 17th, or at latest, the meeting on April 7th.
Second.
Hear a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for the procedural heads up, though. Appreciate it. Our next item is to please consider approving a request. Did we ever, we did not move to appoint David, did we?
No.
No, halfway through.
Yep. All right. I would move that the board appoint Mr. David Rosenberg to the Board of Registrars for a three-year term beginning on April 1st, 2020.
Second.
Hear a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Rosenberg.
He wrote to say, I should have said this, he wrote to say he had a conflict tonight. He wasn't able to be here, but he certainly hoped you would still take it up, so he'll be pleased.
I had already put a note out to Chuck to do a safe check on him to make sure. It's very weird not having him here.
No, I saw him on Tuesday, and I was like, "Are you going to be there on Wednesday?" Because of the thing last night, he couldn't. And I said, "Well, I'll see you on Thursday." He said, "No, I can't be to that either."
Oh, man. All right. Our next item this evening is to please consider approving a request from the Federated Church of Norfolk to use the gazebo on Town Hill on Easter Sunday, April 12th, 2020, for their annual sunrise service from 5:30 to 7:00 a.m.
I understand it's a lovely annual event that we would want to absolutely approve this request for. We, as staff, we have no issues with it, and hope it's a beautiful morning.
Absolutely. Chris, questions, comments?
Nope. It's actually, it is a great event when you see it, sunny morning, it's wonderful.
C.C.?
No.
All right. With that, I would move that the board approve a request by the Federated Church to utilize the gazebo on Town Hill on Sunday, April 12th, from 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. to hold their annual Easter Sunday services.
Second.
Hear a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our last action item this evening is to please consider appointing Judith Lazzardi as Records Access Officer to replace Anthony Turri.
So, Mr., a previous board appointed Anthony as the Town's Records Access Officer in 2018, and I apologize, I don't have the date in front of me. And he's had done a very good job of that, but he has found it to become quite a challenge for him to continue. And as of February 24th, he actually submitted his resignation from performing that work going forward. Still needs to be performed. We receive requests for records, some weeks quite, quite a few, some weeks none, but it's still an obligation of the town under state law. So, in thinking about it, and how we could get that accomplished, I naturally decided that the person to my left here was the, a person who would do a fantastic job at it. Judith has been quite a breath of fresh air in her office, and her, her attention to detail is, well, she, I just pale in comparison, I think, some days. She's quite good at that, and so, we are proposing her for this role, and she will be initially, as she takes on the role, really focused on the details of timing and making sure requests are handled in a timely fashion, getting the information, getting it back out. And she'll be supported by Scott and myself in terms of how to handle more complex records requests as she grows into the role. Because, as you probably recall from last year's fall town meeting, we did increase Mr. Turri's hours in part to do this work, and so, we've spoken to the clerk's office, and we, what we're going to propose is a, a reduction in his hours, because he will no longer be performing this work, and an increase in, due to this instead. They are paid at approximately the same rate of pay, so what we will be doing is, as we get to the year-end transfers and the budget process that get handled between the select board and the advisory committee, we will simply ask you to approve a transfer to decrease monies in the clerk's budget and increase the select board's budget accordingly, so there will be no additional costs to the town. That's, and that, that trans, that transition will start, not next week, the week after. So, he will reduce his hours by 10, and she will increase her hours by 10.
Good. Thank you. So, what will be the total hours?
So, right now, he works 40 hours a week, and he will work 30. And she currently works 30, 25 hours a week, and she will work 35 hours a week. It's a little bit of a learning curve for us upstairs in terms of her learning the work and the detail that's required, but also understanding how much time it takes. I mean, we were told, and it's in your budget book, that we believe it takes, he estimates it's 10 to 15 hours. We haven't done it, so we're not sure. There might be some weeks that it takes 15 and something else doesn't get done. There might be other weeks where it takes, you know, seven. We're going to learn as we go. We might need to adjust in future budget years, but we're trying to take a conservative approach right now.
On that, it's not, it's slightly unrelated, but I noticed in the town clerk budget in the book we just got tonight, the, the town clerks' budget went up, not for elections, went up from 145,000 to 153,000. Have we even, from, is there any reason why?
Not that immediately comes to mind, but let me get back to you tomorrow.
If I could, just tie back to the Records Access Officer for one moment. You know, that role is really the definition of a thankless job. I think that in some cases, not to paint a great picture for you, Judith, but in some cases, you know, public act, public records requests are kind of used as a tactic by law firms in some cases to encumber a town if that's something that they want to do, or in some cases, you're brought into the middle of a contentious piece of communication where there's a lot of emotions at hand, and sometimes you may inadvertently catch the brunt of that. Anthony did an incredible job with that over the course of the last few years, and I really just wanted to make sure that we showed our appreciation for what he did in that time. And that, you know, Judith, your skill set absolutely lends itself to the nature of the position, so we really look forward to you stepping in. So, thank you so much for doing that. Chris, anything else from your perspective?
No, I think Judith would make a great R.A.L.
I just have one question. Did you post the job or any, I mean, it's an increase or it's, it's money that, I mean, could work for. I was just wondering if, you know, what was done in terms of?
We didn't, because we weren't thinking that it was appropriate to try to bring a new employee into the organization.
I meant within the?
Oh, no. I honestly, I did not. You know, I thought about who would have the ability to do this type of work well, and that other departments, generally everybody else is fairly full-time, so I didn't see the opportunity for someone else to add hours or perform other work they've already supposed to be doing, or not perform other work. So, it was a natural for both reasons. It's a, it's an extra, it's not anyone's job description now. It's an additional duty, but as we redo job descriptions, that's something we're going to have to consider memorializing.
C.C., is your concern that we are at risk for not having posted an opportunity?
No, I don't even know if it's that, if it's that grave. I just think that, you know, if there's an opportunity for people within the town to, to make some extra money, certainly, and this is, has nothing to do with Judith. I know that if it were me, I would be, had, you know, maybe slightly less than 40 hours. It would be something I would have been interested in. So, it was just more from the parity.
Mm-hmm.
That was it, not from any?
I understand.
Not from any sort of liability.
Yep.
All right. With that, I would move that the board appoint Ms. Judith Lazzardi as the Records Access Officer to replace Anthony Turri.
Second.
Hear a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Judith.
Don't look so scared.
All right. That concludes our action items for the evening in just a shade over two hours. So, we move over to our discussion items for the evening. Our first one tonight is to please discuss a draft of the warrant for the annual town meeting.
So, here it is. It's 29 articles right now. They are your typical budget-related items for general fund and enterprise funds, possible capital expenditures, reports, CPC, Chapter 90, grants, and so on. But I would point out to you a few, a few things that are different. Number 10 is a request by the school committee to, for the town to set up a special education reserve fund. In getting to a 4.4% budget, the school committee has not included any monies in its budget for any out-of-district placements for a student that has special needs that they can't accommodate. What they're proposing is that they remove that from their budget, and they, we set up this fund, so should there be an out-of-district placement come that they weren't aware it was going to happen, that they use this as a funding source. And so, what happens is it's set up by town meeting. The recommendation right now is for them to prospectively have us transfer a town meeting, what they would, what they anticipate turning back to us at the end of the year, rather than having it go to free cash. It go into this fund, so it's available on July 1st, and then if they get an out-of-district placement that they need to place, that they, by a vote of the school committee and the select board, they could draw monies from the fund to pay the tuition of said student wherever said student needs to go. That's the only way the money can come out, it has to be voted by both boards. So, I would, if they were still here, I would, I would, I believe that if there wasn't set up, then their budget request would be something north of 4.4%, so they could put those funds in. As I sit here tonight, I don't know exactly what they're suggesting could go into the fund. All I can tell you is last year, they turned back about $100,000. I absolutely cannot tell you, sitting here tonight, what they would propose for the transfer now, but that's generally the, why they want to do it and the mechanics of how it would work. So, that's one. I would point out to you that we have structured the water and, water and wastewater enterprise fund articles differently than they've been done in the past. I'm recommending that we use the model the State Department of Revenue prefers to pass those budgets, and the reason I have is that I think this provides more information to voters before they come to town meeting about what's in the budget, rather than waiting for us to put a slide up at town meeting that shows how the money's going to be spent. I just think it's more transparent. So, that's the reason for that change. Number 12 is a request by the town government study committee to have an article that obligates the town to mail all town meeting warrants. As you know, that's been, you know, a conversation about, we mail the annual, we send a postcard, how do we feel about that? So, they have actually suggested that we change our town bylaws to require that they both be mailed. And what I've learned from advisory is postcard costs have gone up to the point where unless it's a, a, an old telephone book of a bylaw, of a warrant, they probably can afford it within their level funded budget. So, that's, can't promise it, but that's kind of where they have landed. There are, articles 19 through 28 are all planning board related. There is one to amend the zoning bylaws to limit the two-family provision for affordable housing. That's been something identified for a couple of years, and I can't tell you why it wasn't acted on, but here it is. And there are a number of bylaws that Planning Board has furnished to us as they think about changes to the C6 zone where the former Southwood Hospital is, and ways that if we are contemplating a development of that property, we might want to have zoning changes that would help us achieve that. What I understand is that right now, this is somewhat a Chinese menu of options, that they will be debating this at their next meeting, and they would probably not go forward with all of these. It's either this or that, and this one related to that one. 9:24 p.m. I promise you, I can't enunciate exactly which ones go with which and what order, but that's generally where they're at. So, I would expect the number of articles that would go down. And then lastly, then the last two are the acceptance of Nichols Way, and then we do have one citizens petition that's come in, which is a, would change our, the makeup of the advisory committee by, as members are, resign and need to be new unsappointed, there would be a requirement that they have some amount of financial background that's described in the article, that the moderator would use to, to determine who he, in this case, he would appoint going forward.
So, it would be a requirement, not a suggestion?
It would be a requirement.
Can you do that?
If the, if the town wants to change the bylaws to allow that, I mean, I can't say what the, I can't sit here and tell you what the Attorney General's Office would say about that, because as you know, at the end of the day, they have to approve our bylaws. And, and I would also point out, I have included here exactly what was given to us by the citizens in the petition. I have not sent this warrant to Town Council yet. He has not seen it. So, you know, he, whenever you have a citizens petition, you know, it's gracious at least to have Town Council look at it and at least to make a citizens group aware what they may want to be aware of about whether it's legal or not. But at the end of the day, it's their petition.
Right.
And they have the requisite signatures to have it on the warrant. It might be helpful to them to know that there might be a fatal flaw or not, but at the end of the day, they have the right to bring it forward, and if it passed town meeting on its face, then it goes to the state. I can't, I don't know enough to know whether they would find it acceptable or kick it back. But there is a process that that happens.
My very pedestrian knowledge of the way that the statute is framed is that each municipality has the opportunity to implement either an advisory committee or a finance committee. And I would think that, I was under the impression that this was intended to change our acceptance from advisory to a finance committee, not to require specific background for appointment to the advisory committee.
Yeah. The actual wording is in here in the last articles, and you certainly can.
C.C., I don't know if you have any insight?
So, I think this is, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I think I know who, who put this petition forward.
And they've been in the audience a time or two opining as to who should and shouldn't be on the advisory. And it is, my opinion, as a divorce attorney, so it's nothing to do with constitutional law, I don't think that financial people are a protected class, but it's my opinion that the advisory committee is appointed by the moderator. And if the moderator wants the advisory committee to be all divorce lawyers, then by God, the advisory committee, if you can find them, is all divorce lawyers. I was on the advisory committee. I don't have a lick of financial, but I worked my, you know, my backside off. I think I did a good job. I know there's people on the advisory committee now from all sorts of different walks of life. And I think one of the most effective is a stay-at-home parent. So that I don't think has any background in finance either, other than running her household. So I don't know, that'll just be probably what I say at town meeting. But I think it, it's, the moderator doesn't have a whole lot of jaziness.
Right.
And one is to run town meeting and have, you know, and the other is the appointment of the advisory board in whatever way he or she thinks is appropriate. And if they don't like it, they can run for moderator.
This would require two positions of the nine to have this background if it passed this way.
Got it. Okay.
Not all, so.
I mean, I do appreciate, because I think that it's sort of a nod to the reality that if they couldn't find anybody, then it defaults to whomever, because I think that's the reality of any volunteer organization.
So I'm just interested if you have any concerns about the order of things or any articles that I should be aware of. But if not, I'm going to send it off to Town Council and start the vetting process and wait to have Planning Board report back in about whether they want all of these articles or some or none. Because we're, our plan is to sign it on April 21st. So we have time to get it out and do everything else.
I mean, in the absence of a highly contentious article that we would typically try to move up for scheduling purposes.
Oh, I think they should all be at the back.
You think all of them should be at the back?
No, anything contentious, so that people have to just sit all night. So that they're not, because if it's like the fourth article, then everybody gets up and files out, and it's disruptive. And then everybody's trying the shenanigans with Colin, you know, moving to re-vote.
I did.
We don't have any, so it's a good thing. But just know that in the future, my view is if there's a hotly contested, I'm going to advocate this.
Fall town meeting, here we go. Can't wait.
Everybody can stay in their chair.
Right. I did, I did remove the article that we've had for a number of years on acceptance of easements on the advice of the moderator and Town Council that it's really not legal.
Right, yeah.
We're not doing that one. And I know you're missing it, but it's not there.
Disappointment for Kevin, I know.
Chris, did you have any?
He was going to have an easement watch party.
I think it looks good.
Okay. CC, any comments?
No, it's great.
Yeah, I think that the sequence follows our normal sequence, so there isn't anything that's too outlandish here. All right, so, very good. Our next item is to please discuss the formation of a building committee for the repair or replacement of the fire station.
So the hiring of the two additional people in the fire department filled by the grant position has presented, it's awesome, and we're really excited about it and what it brings to the department, but it's been, it's presented challenges in terms of now we have people working 24. We have people working 24-hour shifts, but the way that it's structured before, we didn't necessarily have everybody, all four people, on 24-hour shifts and overnight. And so the trailer that we have on site, the house trailer that we use for, as a kitchen, as a kind of a day room, as a sleeping space and locker rooms, is really, is inadequate for any length of time that's significant. And it's my understanding that when that trailer was bought 15 years ago, it was sufficient for a while, but it was always thought that sooner we were going to get to addressing the station, and the town worked towards that. Well, and when the grant was put in, I think the grant was put in as a, hey, we're, the fire station's still on the horizon. We'll, we'll get by for a couple of months or six months or whatever it is. We'll figure it out for a short time till we have our new station. And now the new station is some point in the future that we can't identify today. And so the chief has identified that we really are not able to function well because we don't really have a place for people at one time. What he's done in the interim is put a cot in the, what is a room that's also their locker room for all their stuff in the trailer, and working that way. And so I've had himself and Matt working together on looking what the options are to, can we, should we get a bigger trailer that addresses this better for now? Is that a good approach for when we do get to replacing the station by being able to maybe stay on-site if we can house people in that and the trailer that we have for office space, rather than move them off-site, which was, I guess, the plan a couple of years ago when we were looking at both buildings? Or is it possible to renovate the, some portion of the existing station to create a kitchen, create appropriate bathrooms, and create, you know, appropriate sleeping space so they can move back in? And so we're bringing it towards, in front of you, not necessarily because we're asking, want to decide whether we want you to make that decision, and do you want staff to come to you with a recommendation and the cost-benefit analysis? Or would the board think it's more appropriate to appoint a committee and say, we're not ready to work on replacing the station, but we want to get going with a group of people who are, you know, perhaps experts in various things. And your first job is to study this and report back to us with your recommendation. You work, you hear from staff, you ask the hard questions, and you come back to us and tell us what you think. And we might decide to do that. So that's really what we're asking you tonight is, we think we need to deal with this because we don't know when we're going to be able to build the station in, as it needs to be. And it's not going to, it's not workable to be asking staff to work in this space, live in this space for more than very long. So how do we want to approach dealing with this question? Is why it's on the agenda.
Yeah, from my perspective, you know, hearing about what was needed in terms of an action plan for how to address the immediate concerns as well as everything we're looking at in the either near or distant future, it seemed like a great opportunity to consolidate one effort to be able to address both of those needs and then have some continuity from what we're addressing in the short term to what we're potentially dealing with in the long term with the fire station project. I think this presents us with a great opportunity to get that team together, to get those engaged individuals and those professionals with expert backgrounds together to start assessing the needs, and then to have that same group potentially continue on into the assessment of the project as a whole. At least just my perspective. Chris?
I would agree.
CC?
Sounds good to me. It's getting late. Whatever you want.
Judith and I have a bet going of his north or south at 10 o'clock, so.
I think we can speed this up.
So that being said, we're in agreeance that putting together a building committee to assess this is the direction. Do you want us to go through the specifics of the makeup and things of that nature at this point, or?
Well, I think it would be helpful, if we're going to put a website posting out and Facebook posts and whatever, it would be helpful, maybe not tonight, maybe at the next meeting, whichever you prefer, to talk about the type of background you would be interested in hearing. You know, what types of background you think would be beneficial to this committee? Is it architects? Is it engineers? Is it people who have facilities backgrounds? I mean, I would.
Yes.
I would assume we're going to want to have a fire chief. I don't want to be on the committee. I think I should stay separate. That's my own two cents for what it's worth. But what you can have, so we included in your packet what the background is in the bylaws. You can have three, but not more than five members of the community. So you think in a five-member committee, you think in a seven. And if you were, if we're going to be putting up an advertisement, if you will, it might be helpful to describe what type of background you would welcome. So you can then vet resumes and applications.
Yeah, I mean, I think everything that you mentioned would lend itself to the project, and I'd hate to put really tight parameters on what we're looking for in the hopes of getting more feedback from people. So I would leave it open to everything that you had mentioned as it pertains to construction projects, design, architectural experience, things of that nature. Unless, Chris, you have something else in the back of your mind?
No, I agree.
CC?
No.
As the only sitting member of this building committee, do you have any?
No, I think everything you've said is magical. Yep.
All right, we'll get it together, and we'll put it out there, and we'll bring it back to you when we have some, some applications to put in front of you.
9:30 is when the glaring compliments start to flow.
Yeah, that's exactly it. That's right. That's exactly it. Press your luck, but that's true.
All right, our next item for discussion this evening is to please discuss the adoption of a code of conduct.
So following some discussions that we've had about this type of topic, included in your packet is a draft of what that could look like. And so the board asked us to bring forward a document such as this to start to debate whether this is something that it wants to impose upon itself. It's written to, for the purpose that it would be the board's code of conduct for itself. It's not, it's not meant to be a document that is imposed on any other board. So I, and it covers how the board works in relation to the community, in relation to each other, in relation to the town administrator and town staff, and responsibilities that are, need to be in place to make sure that it's followed. And then separately, some communities have adopted, a little bit different, but along the same track, some communities have found it necessary to adopt a visitor's code of conduct if they've had situations where visitors who come to town buildings aren't able to have a appropriate, conduct themselves in an appropriate manner that's difficult. And so I'm not saying we've had those incidents, but it's something that is out there in municipalities. And so we thought it was important to bring that in front of you to learn more about.
Thank you, Blythe. In the draft that you see here, there is a section that is identified as Section 4, Distribution of Education. That highlights a number of bullets as they relate to the town clerk. I think we should strike that from this proposal, because I don't think the intent was to highlight any action by the town clerk as they pertain to this initiative.
Although I'm glad you say that, because I had, I'm like, she's an elected official, why are we, what's going on here? She's supposed to do a state ethics thing, like there's, that's.
She already has responsibilities as a town clerk.
Right.
I say that we picked a model that's from another community. It's, we've got to adopt what's right for us.
Yep. My other note is expected conduct on the visitor's code of conduct. It could be minimal in nature, but I don't know, we need to do all caps for these things. It just comes across as.
Shouty.
I mean, as 30% of the emails we get. So, yeah, I don't know if that's necessary, if we could just change that.
Not, not at all related to this, at all, but we had, we had active shooter training today from the police department. And actually, it was fascinating. We learned a lot. We don't ever want to be exercising it, but it was really good to learn. And, you know, we hope we don't need this, but, you know.
So those are my two notes.
Keep your guns in the car. The, my things are, it's funny, I think that while I see an email or a text or something with caps, and I think, why is this guy shouting? I see this, I don't have an issue with taking it back, but I see this, and I just think, well, this is the stuff they want more easily read. Like, oh, it's in caps, so that must be what I should really actually focus on reading. Just funny generationally. Like, I'm enough older that I'm like, I don't see that as shouting. I just see that as highlighting the important stuff, but.
Or you're numb to it at this point in your life.
It could be that. With respect to the visitor's code of conduct, I mean, and I know this is just, hopefully it's just a draft, because I have some other stuff, but, I mean, I just think, there's a lot of really loose kind of group hug-type language in here that maybe could be a little tighter. But for, just by way of an example, in the visitor's code of conduct, the town will not tolerate harassing conduct. I think that that's such an overly broad term. I mean, it, you know, is it harassment in the criminal sense? Is it harassment in the civil sense? You know, not quite a restraining order, but a civil harassment? Like, what do we, I mean, I hate to say this, but there's a Supreme Court case that defines pornography. And, and the justice says, the only way you can define pornography is you know it when you see it. And that may be what it is with harassing conduct, but if we're trying to, rather than sort of prosecute people for it, we're trying to alert people to not use the, not be shouting at people, not be, you know, what do we mean? And maybe we can't. Maybe we just have to say, well, you know it when you see it. But, but that was, that was one of the things that I saw. I saw a typo apropos of nothing. I'm assuming it's anti-bullying policy and not the anti-bullying policy? That's page three of four. The other thing relative to the town clerk is just basically memorializing what she does. I do, and again, like I said, I know we're just sort of starting the conversation now. My question is, under the conduct of the select board in relation to the town administrator, of course, I'm going to try to treat you professionally. I may not always succeed, but don't kick me under the table if I don't. But it says, give the town administrator full responsibility for discharging their disposition and/or solutions. And I don't know what that means. I mean, that is, like, does that mean that only you get to decide things and we can't second-guess? Well, does it mean, right, I just, I'm just thinking some of the language. I just maybe need a little bit more guidance as to what. Like, I get the other stuff, right? Don't bark orders, don't be a jerk.
Right.
Be a, be a good coworker. Don't be an harassing coworker. I get that that's our raison d'etre with here, but that one, I'm just not sure.
I guess, what I would say is if there's a decision about a way we're going to solve something, for instance, we're going to solve the shortfall in what we bring in to run the transfer station, and we're going to do that by some fee changes, and we're going to require people to use bags rather than stickers, then the town administrator has the full authority to go ahead and implement that, that solution. I would think what needs to be clear is where's the decision-making in all this that leads to.
Implementation.
Implementation.
I just, and I wasn't being flippant, I just think it needs to. And there's just some, you know, more conversations that maybe have to happen. That was.
Yep.
Those are my thoughts. Kind of whirlwind, trying to get it under, all in under 10 PM.
Chris?
I had a similar, CC, with regard to the conduct with town administrator. And my, my other, where does this come from, I guess? Is this something that other towns are adopting? Where do we come up with this? Do we have an employee code of conduct in town hall?
We, in the, the policies, I mean, I don't, I don't have Scott still here to ask him.
I mean, we're asking.
We have an anti-bullying policy.
We're asking the selectmen to have a code of conduct. We're asking visitors to have a code of conduct. But, you know, we do have employees that I think we're, you know, we're putting it all on the pressure of these two groups. What about the employees? Do they have a code of conduct they're supposed to adhere to? I mean, I just, I didn't understand why we were getting one, and that's why I said, do the employees have a code of conduct?
Well, it comes out of some other conversations we've had in some other meetings about whether this is something that we would put in place to resolve some issues that we've had. I will go, I'm just, sorry, it's been a long day, and I just don't recall exactly what we have in place for employees. I'm sure we do, and I'll go get that right out to you.
Chris, can I chime in? I know it's, the mic is yours, but I'm thinking of something. Like, you said that about, and Blythe is going to look up the employees. I know that we have an anti-bullying policy, but I know that one of the things that I'd like to see, either to piggyback on the anti-bullying policy, different, whatever, is more of a general harassment policy that maybe would be, would incorporate, you know, for everybody.
Yep.
Right? Because I think that that could manage people's expectations. Because I think one of the things that we're trying to do, not necessarily with this, but maybe with this, and I did, I just saw another sentence, and I'm like, oh, my God, but we can do that later, is just get people to stop being so awful to each other. So, and maybe rather than piecemeal here, here, here. So, and maybe rather than piecemeal here, 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 maybe, you know, do we explore this as a part of a harassment policy, you know, like in a section of the harassment policy is how we're going to treat each other. But I would be interested to see what the town employees have, have to do as well.
I will double-check, I'm just drawing a blanket this hour.
Oh, thank you.
And now I've lost where my other sentence was, but I'll find it again.
Well, let's see, this was on for discussion, so if you have any other points, just let me know.
Well, no, I mean, absolutely. I'm not indicting it by any stretch. I know that that's, it was just for. Yeah, I mean, there's some, I don't know, it's interesting. Cool. All right.
Okay, we'll stop for that now. Chris, did you have any other?
Nope, that was it.
All right, our last discussion item this evening is to please discuss a policy to publish correspondence received by the board on the board's website page. I'll take this one.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, you know, when we went through our budget discussions, one of the things that stuck out was when the town clerk was up here talking about the records access officer and the amount of time that the assistant town clerk had dedicated to that function. I believe that she said it was somewhere between 10 and 15 hours of his work week. There seemed to be an opportunity there to bridge some gaps. And with this board having put such a big emphasis on transparency going into this year with our other initiatives, there was a distinct opportunity for us to be able to bridge some of the gaps for what people are looking for in terms of transparency as well as take some of the strain off of the records access officer in terms of getting some of the communications that are coming into the board up onto the website for public consumption. I'm not saying that that's going to make any kind of large dent in our new records access officer's workload, but I do think that, given some of the public comment periods that we've heard as they relate to some interest in correspondence that have been going back and forth, it would be of benefit to the community to be able to highlight some of the types of messages that are coming in, questions that might overlap with interests of the community, or just general correspondence and question and answer so that people will be able to reference them in an easier and more constructive fashion. That hits a lot of those types of opportunities and points, but I did want to bring it before the board to get their opinion as to if you felt that was a worthwhile endeavor and if you thought that there was as much benefit as I think there is to going down that road.
I only, not fear is, but who's going to decide what goes to the website and what doesn't go to the website? And maybe it's Judith as the RAO. That would be the hard part if someone administering that could become.
Yeah, there's a, there's a level of subjectivity you want to make sure that you keep with it. My initial proposal was to have it fall on the select board clerk. With other clerkships.
What? I'm like, and here's the thing, here's how tired, I'm like, "Wait a minute, that's me."
I make, I make a motion, I make a motion to approve Article 15 as it reads now.
You're out of order.
The reason why that was the original proposal was if you go to other boards and committees, I can only go back to my town and the planning board, but as clerk, you take a bunch of correspondence from all the other towns' planning boards identifying projects that are coming up and you bring them to the meeting and you highlight and say, "Hey, look, this is what Franklin's doing, just wanted to let everybody know. Hey, look, this is what Walpole's doing, just want to let everybody know." We don't necessarily have that component to this and trust me, I'm not trying to throw more on top of that role, but I just figured that was the most appropriate person to be able to act as that, that conduit.
Actually, I'm fine with that.
Oh, wow.
Ask me why.
Why?
Because I'm not clerk after May 3rd.
No, you don't know.
With Fred Chris Wheeler.
Nothing is said in stone, that's right.
You don't know that.
Oh, it's traditions though, man. It's traditions. But I actually am also, I mean, I think that that makes sense. It seems to fall within the purview of the clerk. I think that makes sense. I do, again, sort of harkening back, I, I know this is going to end up on Facebook at some point, but I do seem to be talking about pornography a lot tonight, but I do, again, think that that's got the same subjectivity, but, you know, we can talk about that and the, we can talk about that.
It would just be whether or not you put it up on the website or it still became an RAO item as a.
Well, it would always be an RAO item, it's just whether or not you also put it up on the website.
Yeah, clearly it would be public record and I think that a lot of people don't necessarily understand that everything that comes into this board is, you know, subject to the public record laws. So I think this helps bridge a gap for people, make those things more accessible for them without having necessarily go through that process. I don't think that this is necessarily all RAO kind of material. I think this is more of somebody writing in to ask about dark space, to be able to look at the stars at night and what the board's response to that was. Somebody writing in to say, "What's the process for me to be able to get Town Hill for an event? This is our response for that." Anything that we feel, the correspondence that comes in that would be of benefit or interest to the community at large would go up on that page for people to have access to. I just feel like that would, you know, add another component of transparency to show people what this board is able to deal with, address, and how we go about that on a daily basis.
Query, and I just theoretically, it's the clerk and the clerk is me. Am I answering the question too?
No.
I'm just deciding what is appropriate to put on the board.
Yep.
Is there an opportunity to just basically let the constituency know, "I think it's all appropriate. I'm going to load it all." You want to, you want to send an email that says, "I think you're ugly and your mother dresses you funny, Cece?" I'm putting it up there and letting people decide whether my mom dresses me funny, right? I, I don't know that that's the answer, I'm just saying.
The analogies get very colorful at night.
After 9:30, I start, I really start to bring my A-game.
I guess my other question is how do we, I'm thinking about the, the details and logistics, like we get, got a letter about what our Chapter 90 allocation's going to be. There's nothing to answer. Is that something we send to you and say, "Here's all the things we got this week. You pick through it aside?" Or is it just emails that come to the board or letters from, from, from young students who want a sidewalk on their street and we wrote back and said, "We don't have any money for that right now." I'm just trying to figure out what the, where the goalposts are here on what we give to the clerk so the clerk can decide because with all due respect, there's lots of correspondence you never see. I'm not going to send you the Chapter 90 letter because it just happens, it's just part of the wallpaper.
Yeah, I didn't really intend for the, the business nature items that come from the state notifications or items that we.
Emails to us, right?
It's emails to the board.
To the constituents, you know.
Great, that's helpful. I just want to be clear.
Townspeople's emails, their concerns, their observations, their ad hominem attacks to us.
Okay.
And to that point too, I mean, you know, while somebody writing in to you saying that you dress funny might be something that you're more than happy to put out there. If somebody were to write in and say, "Chris dresses funny," you know.
I would send it to him and ask him if he wants it on the.
Yeah, there's got to be a certain level of protecting individuals as part of this.
And I may decide, you know, it's not worth it.
And I don't think that would necessarily, you know, keep those types of messages from going out there. I just feel like we'd have to protect the names of individuals that aren't necessarily on this board in those cases.
So that's a great point. So by that you mean, so if somebody says, "Cece, you and your friend Becky are idiots", I, I am going to black out Becky. I'm not blacking out the person who says you and Becky are idiots.
Nope.
I'm just blacking out Becky unless I say, "Hey, Becky, this guy thinks we're idiots."
But is that also something we need to share with the public?
I don't know, you send me something.
It's a public record, but it's not, it's not providing any information to the town.
I think it provides information about the person sending me the email.
I mean, your clothes dress is definitely important.
Right, exactly.
I don't know, I think it's, I think you gotta, I think you gotta, we gotta maybe take some examples because I think it could get, it could get very strange.
Well, I think that most people aren't just saying one thing. They're not just saying, "You're an idiot." They're, they're, they have questions or concerns, albeit maybe they're, they're dressing them up as ad hominem attack.
I mean, I'm thinking, I've received one question on the, on the night stars. I've received two questions this week on my stance on the school budget. You know, I think they're the only ones.
Yeah, that's the only ones I've gotten this week.
Yeah. I mean, so we don't see a lot of them.
You're lucky.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, I feel like there is a benefit here for the community at large. I understand that there are going to be periods of time where maybe there won't be as many emails coming in or maybe there won't be as many things that would be identified of this interest to the community. But I think by taking the first step to start getting this flowing and to identify what we see come in and what ends up onto the webpage, we'll get a better sense of how we can hone in on making this be something else.
As I said, get a couple of examples as we go forward. You may get more than we do, so you're obviously getting a lot.
And we'll have to figure out what the webpage looks like. There might be a page for this, but then is it like posted by week, like we do the actual agendas?
Scan them in and you just.
And, okay, the week of March, you know, 9th, we got these and that doesn't make it easy for people to find, but I don't know how we would, haven't thought through the mechanics of what it would look like differently. These are ones about how the board dresses, these are ones about the budget, these are ones about.
Awesomely is the answer.
And is it just a question, is it just a statement, there's no discussion, right? It's just a statement.
It's just, here's what they, I think it's a good point maybe too to, or not a point, but it's maybe not a bad idea. Obviously, we tell people and they should know that everything you send is public record, but there's a difference between something's in the bowels of the mainframe and somebody has to go and specifically ask for it and somebody walks in a sill and says, "Hey, I saw the email you sent to the selectman last week." Like, maybe we throw it on people's heads-up display going forward, questions that we think are interesting or, or novel or, you know, touch on, you know, controversial topics, we may be putting up on the website. So if you don't want it, don't send it.
Yeah, I mean, just from my perspective too, I know that over the course of the last two weeks, I have tried my best to address some misconceptions that are out there as they relate to some of the functions of the budget. And it's difficult to get that out to the general community. I think those kind of correspondences, those kinds of responses have great value to people. It's just a matter of what medium we have available to us to be able to push that out. And I think this would be a great way to be able to do that.
I like, I think that's right. Less having to respond on the community page.
Yeah.
I'm not on the community page.
I am just because I am concerned if someone posts something that, something that town should be doing something about, I want to be.
No, I mean, I just get my.
Do it. But I don't post stuff very, hardly at all.
All right, so I think we're all in agreement that this is a great initiative to test and see how it works out.
So it works out.
Blythe, do we need a policy that outlines this action or do you feel it just by identifying this is what we're doing, we're, we're, okay, the latter? All right.
Simple.
Very good. All right, let's get to some warrants.
Three minutes.
Mr. Weider, up to you, sir.
I move that we approve the following warrants on 2/14/20 in the amount of $819,810.94, on 2/18/20 in the amount of $198,731.06, and on 2/18/20 in the amount of $110,793.59.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I move to accept the following warrant dated 2/25/20 in the amount of $165,608.10. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes this evening. No minutes this evening, four minutes this evening.
Four sets.
Four sets.
Yep.
Optimistically hoping nobody finds typos that I didn't see, I'm going to move that the board approved the minutes of the January 28th, February 4th, 8th, and 18th, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Hear a second? Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Blythe, do we have anything else that we might have missed in our last four and a half hours?
Two minutes, you have two minutes.
Nope?